Nikki, want to roll call?
Chair Bone, thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
Present.
Supervisor Wilson?
A key.
Supervisor Madron?
Present.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Good morning.
Chair Bone?
A lock.
All right, thank you.
CIO. CIO, what do you want to tell us this morning?
Are we going to do flag salute?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. I just skipped right over that. I did, imagine that. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I do apologize for that.
Good morning, Chair Bone. We have a number of modifications today. First, I would just like to note that item D-19 was noticed as a public hearing. However, that is not a requirement of that item, and so it will remain on the consent calendar. Items D-4, D-8, and D-27 will be pulled from consent for discussion. And for the awareness of the audience and your board, item H-1, which is the public hearing regarding subdivision, is going to be continued to Friday morning, potentially around 11:00 a.m.
Basically, there was an error in the paperwork, put on the agenda, and we are not able to proceed forward. So you will be able to talk in public comment. You'll be able to say your public comment. We'll add the proper paperwork, resubmit it, and have the meeting on the appeal on Friday, the hearing on the appeal on Friday. And it's not a hearing, but we'll hear the appeal on Friday.
Can we comment at that time?
You can comment today, you can comment next week, you can comment Friday, at the next meeting, I mean.
One time?
No. You're going to get two bites at the apple because what's on the agenda today is going to change enough information to allow you to comment again on Friday.
Okay, so we can comment at both weeks? Okay. Today and Friday?
Yep. Two bites at the apple. I'm as excited as you are. Anyway, these things happen. If you didn't notice, there was quite a few attachments and quite a few emails flying back and forth, and we want to make sure that everything's as proper as possible. So with that... Is that it?
That's it, Chair.
Not sure. All right, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there any comment on the consent calendar from the board?
Chair Bone, I wanted to pull an item to read it aloud, if that's okay?
That was D-4 that is pulled?
Oh, yes.
Do you want to pull another item?
No, that's the one, I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll do that one. Pulled items, thank you very much for reminding me. Anybody else? With that, I'll ask for a public comment on the consent calendar, minus D-4, D-8, and D-27.
Chair Bone, we have no callers with their hands up in Zoom.
I see no one at the podium. I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll move consent, minus D-4, D-8, and D-27.
Been moved by...
Can I get clarification on that second? I heard two.
Second, Bushnell. With D-4, D-8, and D-27 pulled. Wilson, what's the first?
Thank you.
Roll call vote?
Oh.
Oh. Which one is it? Okay. All right. I'm sorry, well, D-2 is going to... Go ahead, Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair Bone. So this is a resolution in honor of Junie Ann Spear. Is she here today? Perhaps not. She's... Okay. Whereas Junie Ann Spear, known by most as June Spear, turns 100 years old on February 8, 2024. And whereas Junie met the love of her life, Ted Spear, in 1943 in front of the Brown Derby in Los Angeles while Ted was on leave in the Army. They were married in 1944. And whereas Junie moved from Los Angeles to Eureka in Humboldt County in 1947 with her husband Edwin Roger Spear, Ted, a World War II Army veteran, and daughter Teddy. And whereas she and Ted had three children, Teddy Bell, Spencer Spear, and Shannon Spear, who were raised in Eureka, California. And whereas Junie enjoyed fishing and water skiing at Big Lagoon in her earlier years and later enjoyed swimming there, which she still does, plus gardening, hunting for agates and driftwood, and spending time with her children, all at their beloved Beach Cabin at Big Lagoon State Park in Trinidad. And whereas Junie was an American Red Cross lifeguard and swimming instructor in Los Angeles, and after moving to Eureka in 1947, she taught all the local 4th through 7th graders how to swim. She also taught social dancing and etiquette to 5th, 6th, and 7th graders when she started the Frolic Club in Eureka. Whereas from 1950 to 1981, she taught exercise and swimming for the Eureka Adult Education classes and was an American Red Cross volunteer for 62 years and received their Lifetime Achievement Award in June 2004. She still swims at the Arcata Community Pool. And whereas having witnessed the roaring twenties, the Great Depression, World War II, the invention of color TV, the computer, the cellular phone, and so much more, and whereas her favorite pastime was and is regularly hosting families and friends for picnics and barbecues and fun at Big Lagoon and Agate Beach. And whereas the month of June was named after... No. Whereas Junie's secret for a long life is, "A busy person is a happy person." Now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby honors and congratulates Junie Spear on her 100th birthday and wishes her continued health and happiness. Is there anybody here today to accept this resolution? No, I will make sure that it gets to them, so thank you.
Hundred doesn't seem that old anymore. With that...
We're going to vote on a consent first?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
There we go. And then with that, we'll go to items pulled from consent. And I will turn to now Supervisor Arroyo, please.
All right, thank you, Chair Bone. We have a couple of deputies here that are going to receive special recognition today, so if I could have Deputies Taylor and Willoughby come up, and if your colleagues would like to be there too, that's welcome as well. So we have a couple of certificates of special recognition today. I want to say a little bit about what happened, and then I'll invite you to speak. So on January 13th, the special service deputies that you see here were called into action near Felt Road to assist a homeowner with an evacuation effort due to flooding. Due to the rising water levels, the deputies had to deploy a Zodiac raft to traverse approximately a mile of flooded roadway to assist these residents. You were both able to safely evacuate two adults, a one-month-old infant and a family cat, from nearly four feet of waters that were rapidly rising in their home. So today I wanted to make sure to recognize your heroic efforts. We have two certificates of recognition that'll come up and present to you in just a moment. So I want to thank you sincerely for your work. I know when I got to view all of your special equipment in the Special Services Division, I, you know, you have a lot of pretty cool equipment to do lifesaving operations. And I know from, you know, having done a little bit of search and rescue type activity with a different hat on, that, you know, you spend a lot of time practicing, training, keeping equipment in good working order. And then these are the moments where you really, you know, have that opportunity to make such an enormous difference in people's lives. So thank you for that, and you're welcome to say a few words. I'll come present you the certificates, and then you're welcome to say whatever you'd like.
Look at the sheriff getting all proper there. That's the extent of your comments?
Well, yeah, so they're men of few words, that's for sure, okay? Their actions speak louder than their words.
There you go.
Is really what it comes down to. These are our special services guys. These are the guys that go out to snow rescues, go out in the ocean, you know, for any kind of rescue out there, any kind of boat rescue, as well as swift water. They're always on call, and there's essentially four of them on a good day, if everyone shows up to work, that actually do all of this work, and they're led by Sergeant Tony Gomes. So they have an outstanding team with a lot of responsibility, and thank you for this recognition. We do our jobs without, you know, this kind of recognition, this kind of stuff does happen all the time. So we appreciate it, then, you know, those times that we do get recognized for the outstanding work that they do do. So I appreciate this today, and we will cherish it. Thank you very much.
I think the award goes to the whole department for everything they do, but these two were in the front line on this one. And I think the idea of a mother and a father, a small child. And Raleigh, I know your mom was really excited they saved the cat. I think that was, she was really excited about that, so proud of you guys, nice job. Gomes, nice job. Anybody else?
So I... So congratulations, and I know that it specifically you two today, but the whole department, our county depends on you all very much, and the heroic things that you guys do on a daily basis. And I appreciate Supervisor Arroyo recognizing you guys today, and it was in your district, yeah, in Eureka, and I was reading about it as well. But I specifically also wanted to thank the entire department. And you guys should find some words. But thank you.
All right, I'm going to add to this. Because it really is, I mean, you guys really do represent the tip of a spear and of the whole department, and not just the Sheriff's Department, but then all of the other agencies that keep this wheel turning in these events that happen. And I want to emphasize that there were... There was this rescue that occurred, but we had a lot of very stressed-out homeowners and citizens and residents and animals during this event. And this wasn't the only assistance that was given, it was just probably the most dramatic. And also, I want to emphasize that it wasn't just our Sheriff's Department, but all our municipalities, our Public Works, and everybody else doing all that work. And I just want to thank you guys for just, like, again, being that point of assistance when things are really going crazy. And just thank you so much. I'm sure we'll see you again. We're in... This isn't the first or the last time we're going to see these kinds of emergencies. I also really want to appreciate the efforts of the department to help neighbors help neighbors. And I think that's also really important, and I think we're going to see more of that. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, you guys, really appreciate it.
Do we need a public comment?
What's that?
We have to have public comment.
Public comment on this, yes.
There are no callers from Zoom, so...
All right, we'll move on to the next item. Thanks, you guys, appreciate it. Get back to work.
Would you like to have a motion on this item? I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
All right, I'll move approval. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded?
Just one second, Chair, sorry. Okay. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
For future reference on items pulled from the consent, I'm looking at County Council, would I be able to bundle those and just go through all... No?
No.
Okay, done, thank you. Okay, number D-8, I think was pulled by Supervisor Bushnell, I believe, right?
Yes. Thank you. I would like consideration of the board that we do not add this meeting to the March monthly meetings, I guess. We have a full set of meetings that month, and I had already made plans. Of course, I know I'm only one, but I was hoping the board would consider I don't like missing meetings.
I... Supervisor Row?
Given that we're meeting every other week that month, I think that sounds reasonable. But my understanding is that we would still be looking to cancel the May 14 meeting due to the conference that's occurring. Okay. I'm fine with that suggestion.
Is that a motion?
I concur.
I'll make a motion that we do not add a meeting and that we cancel the May 14 meeting. And yeah, thanks. I'll second.
Okay. Public comment?
I strongly support Michelle's change in that schedule there. I'll be in Mexico, that's one less meeting, I have to Zoom from Mexico, thank you.
Okay, anybody on Zoom? No, I didn't.
There are no callers in Zoom.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, thank you. Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you to my board.
Okay. Now we're going to go on to D-27. This is the ratification of the local emergency proclamation due to flooding Humboldt County, and I'll turn that over to Ryan Derby, our OES executor, and our Sheriff William Hansel, and our Department of Public Works head, Tom Mattson.
Yes, please come on up. Before I turn it over to Ryan, just wanted to express what was already said. You know, in these kinds of disaster, when these winter storms come in, or it's an earthquake, our county comes together and we deal with it. A lot of times, it's multiple jurisdictions, like fire, it is Public Works, it's California Highway Patrol, Caltrans, Office of Emergency Services that are working together to quickly assess these damage assessments and to determine whether or not a local emergency needs to be declared, so we can ask for assistance from the state and potentially the federal government. So that's our opportunity at this point in time to declare a local emergency, to bring it in front of the board, to ratify that emergency. And I'd like Ryan and Tom to go over the damages that occurred over this winter storm, and then the thresholds that need to be met in order to, you know, ask for state and federal assistance, just as a reminder to the board and our community, and also to prepare us for the next time. As we've seen over the last three to four years, we're declaring more and more emergencies, you know, on a more frequent basis. So we have to stay prepared for the next one, no matter what that is. And so at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Ryan, then ultimately Tom. Thank you.
Good morning. I wish that I was up here under better circumstances. It seems like every other month I'm reporting out on some other local emergency. So I provided an email report to the board on the 19th. I am going to go through some of the damages that we received due to the flooding and storms on the 13th. Essentially, once we issue a local emergency proclamation, we have 72 hours to collect what are called IDEs, or initial damage estimates, countywide. Those estimates are largely focused on public sector damages, and for this event, we incurred $4,703,840 worth of damages across four different jurisdictions. As a result of this emergency proclamation, we have the Blue Lake Rancheria, County of Humboldt, Shelter Cove Resort Improvement District, and Urok Tribe that all submitted damage reports that were putting up to the state for review, and we'll be setting up a meeting next week to go through those damages. The bulk of damages that we incurred were county roads and bridges, debris removal, and what we call emergency protective measures. That's emergency procurement, staff overtime. And unless there's any questions, I would like to turn it over to Director Mattson because I believe he has a more detailed report on what the county's damages were.
Thank you. Nikki, do you have my PowerPoint? So we had significant damage. We actually dodged a bullet for how much rain we had. We had numerous locations that were flooded, were short-term. Normal locations, Berta Road, Cannibal Island Road, Elk River Road, Glendale Drive, Hawks Hill Road, Hookton Road, Meridian Road, Old Arcata Road, Coffee Creek Road, West End Road, Myrtle Avenue, where the rescue took place, Mad River Road, Amberzini Lane, Rose Avenue. Those were all closed for a short time during the high-water event. Our biggest issue was actually on the roads. We had significant damage out in the Redwood Valley area. We had a community of about 50 people that was stranded from Saturday through Wednesday night at 6:30, when our contractor finally opened the road. We lost two sections of Bear Road, one on each side of the community, so they could not get out either to Hoopa or back to the coast. Next slide, please. Again, this is just an example of the damage on Bear Road and why people couldn't get in and out. The system was just overwhelmed. Residents in Redwood Valley reported seven inches of rain on that Saturday, the 13th. That just simply overwhelmed the system, brought debris down to plug our culverts, and we simply don't have enough people to be at every culvert, to unplug every culvert during this kind of event. So it took out sections of our road. As Ryan said, we suffered about $5 million in damage. Not included in that is the damage we suffered to Lighthouse Road out in the Matole Valley because that's in a pre-existing storm damage site that has yet to be approved by FEMA from 2019. So there is more than that $5 million in damage, but some of it is included in prior damages. Next slide, please. Again, just another photo of how fast a road can disappear on a community and shut it off. Luckily, we have a number of local contractors. We were able to get people out there immediately to get one side open by that Wednesday, but it was severe damage. It was not something that could be done overnight or just flagging people through. Next slide, please. This, I believe, is another picture of the Bear Road area. Next slide, please. This, I believe, is Chesum Road, where we lost a section of the road. Next slide, please. This is an example of a number of issues we had countywide. This is a generic road because we had this in multiple locations where we lost the edge of the road, and will now have to suffer trying to keep that road together through the winter. We've had probably about 10 or 15 different locations like this, where it didn't take out the road, but it compromises the road, and we have to deal with it through this winter. Next slide, please. This, I believe, is Titlow Hill Road, where we lost one lane. Next slide, please. This is an example of private property damage. This is in McKinleyville along Chance Lane with the Urok Tribal Housing Project, where they lost several units, had to evacuate people out of several units due to the overwhelming water that flooded their property. Next slide, please. And this is just another picture of that, the flooding that damaged the housing units in McKinleyville. Next slide, please. This is an example of the flooded roads that I called out at the beginning of this. This is out on Maple Creek Road by North Fork Lumber. Just an example of how fast and how high the water can come to block the road off. And just a reminder to the general public, because I always see cars stranded in this kind of situation, if you drive up to something like this, please do not drive through it. Stop and turn around and find another route, or wait until the floodwaters have gone down. Next slide, please. And that's it. If you have road concerns during any time or during a situation like this, call 707-445-7491 to get our Roads Dispatch, or email us at roadsdispatch.co.humboldt.ca.us, and we will respond as soon as possible. Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I wanted to just say thank you to Public Works. I know that during the last two weeks, you and your crews have worked tremendously, especially in all of the areas of Humboldt County. I really appreciate that I'm able to speak with the two supervisors that are in my district to be able to, you know, update the community, and I just really appreciate all the guys. And that's including the Sheriff's Department, Caltrans, you know, everybody, P G and E that responded during these storms. But since you're reporting, I just really want to say thank you to your department.
Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, and you know, these are heroic lifesaving efforts by the Public Works staff, you know, responding so quickly. And we had people locked in, like you said, out in Redwood Valley on Bear Road. They were running out of gas, running out of food, they had no telephones because the poles were down. I mean, it was a dire situation, and I just want to applaud you and your staff for the incredible efforts in getting contractors in at both ends and working hard to get it open. But it's also something, as a community, we need to recognize that we are underfunded in our roads. And part of why these roads blew out is because we simply don't have the crews, and we don't have the funding to take care of the maintenance of these roads. Last winter, the snowstorms that really hit the coast heavy brought down a tremendous lot of debris, and then that debris mobilizes in a seven-inch and one-day rainstorm and plugs the culvert. So we're working on a ballot measure for this November, and I hope the community sees the wisdom in supporting that preventative work that that direct earmarked funding for roads will help us do. But I just really want to applaud you, Tom, and all of your staff for the hard work, long hours, working in the dark, and all of that. So thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to reach out and call out to the people of Redwood Valley. They were neighbors helping neighbors. We identified a detour that we could have opened if we needed to, if it went longer, but all the neighbors shared resources. They had people walking across the damaged areas to get supplies, to help each other. It was really about the neighborhood community helping each other to get through the disaster while we took what we could to get the road back open, but it was really the neighborhood that helped itself. Supervisor Row?
Thank you. I absolutely agree that we need, you know, dedicated funding for our roads, for maintenance. And in these unique, you know, emergency-type situations, you know, these are not everyday maintenance, and so I'm curious if you could speak to the process for getting state funding or federal funding to assist with addressing emergencies, and what that process looks like with respect to these projects that we're talking about from this winter.
Well, if you want to know about making sausage, it's a long and difficult process. The sheriff steps up first through OES by declaring a local emergency. That doesn't get us any funding, but it allows us to do actions outside of public contract code and get immediate contractors on-site. Hopefully, through your action of accepting this and ratifying this today, it'll go to the state. The state will consider whether or not to reimburse us at the 75% level. If they do, we have still spent this money, that $5 million is spent. That comes directly out of the road maintenance budget first, and we have to wait for reimbursement. Hopefully, it will go federal because then we will get more reimbursement. However, at this point, it takes, it can take 10 years to get our money back through the process. There's, while there's no technical I or T in Federal Emergency Management Agency, there's a lot of I's and T's to be dotted and crossed, and we have to follow everything. We can't do anything outside of what they say to do without prior authority. So it's sometimes, you know, last year, we did a lot of the 2019 storm damage in the construction season. That's three years, four years. That's three years, four years after the disaster event before we got final approvals and got through all the process to get reimbursed. Otherwise, we're out that money. And $5 million is basically a third of my road maintenance budget. That is now absorbed by this emergency, assuming that we get some kind of reimbursement. But with people stranded, we cannot not do anything. We have to get people in and out of their houses. Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks. I do appreciate the efforts of our Public Works staff and everybody. Even, I mean, I want to say, again, we were stretched thin at every level, and so sometimes a few folks had to wait. I definitely heard about that, and we got folks there when, as they were available, and it was definitely all hands on deck. But I do want to emphasize, you're not just about roads in your department. You actually have a natural resources division that does a lot of work around watershed restoration. And that has, we have a lot of talks about that, and there's projects in Jacoby Creek Watershed, which is, you know, supposed to help alleviate or manage some of these floodwaters that we see reoccurring, but also through the, throughout the Mad River Watershed as well, and Elk River and other places. So I want to emphasize that we have a department that's working on these in the sort of immediate, in the short term, and, but we also have departments working on these issues in the long term and trying to manage and mobilize communities to help modify and adjust and restore watersheds so that they're actually functioning better in a way that has less damage. And then also, we have land use policy that we try to, in the future, really try to avoid development in areas that would put people in danger. So we're adjusting to this, all while adjusting to what we now know is change in our climate, which is having impacts, which is making storms stronger. We may see less rain in overall annual events, or overall, but we're seeing more rain in shorter time periods, which is what we're going to see more and more of. And I think that this is part of that adaptation, and I'm thankful that we have departments within this county working with our other municipal jurisdictions in the state to really advance our planning and policies so that we can try and mitigate these things as we move forward. So thanks, Tom. I really appreciate the breadth of your department on this, and so, thanks.
Yes, it's highly interrelated. The work we've done for Salmonoid Passage through culverts and replacing our culverts has definitely improved the resiliency of our road system by having bigger culverts that don't plug and allow the salmon through. It's another resource that doesn't get paid by the road fund, but is coming out of other things that actually helps our road system. And you guys do a great job at it. I echo what everybody has said. Nine of those 15 roads on there that were flooded are in my district, so. And I was, I think, at all of them this weekend at one time or another, and I know I got phone calls from, I got phone calls from everywhere. But you guys were dealing with it as well as possible. And then you throw in the fact that we had more rain than we've had since 1913, I think. So, so I just think there's, there's not much you can do about that. You can't restore that away. It's just going to come out, and there's just no way you can build to that. So, it happens. But the good thing about it is we have departments that can react to it and try to make everybody as whole as possible in the meantime. So, I appreciate it. I'll open this up to public comment.
Sorry, we have no hands up in Zoom.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Woski, I got awakened by my tenants, and they said, "Building's about to have water coming into it down there," and that's the, Dave Powers Creek runs underneath my building. So it was a real surprise to me, you know, to have this kind of storm, to have that effect. The sheriff was out there doing a wonderful job, Tom's people. We had areas that flooded that I've never seen flood before, and I always go, "Why?" The Patriot Station just was totally inundated. And so I asked people, I said, "Well, what do you think?" And my son brought it up. He said, "Well, Caltrans just did a whole bunch of big culvert work on 299, and that needs to be checked into if that was the cause of this," because they concentrate the flows, change flows, and then it comes to a town. Aaron McClure had a beautiful field out there, never had problems. Same related possibly to a culvert, and it was all covered in rocks and debris for a change. So, I do appreciate working, the sheriff working, but we need a little help in like the city of Blue Lake. Our city manager, Amanda Mager, is our director of Public Works, and we did not have any bags to do sandbags out there. So, when you say people get together, Julie Christie, Christie Ranch down there brought up a whole bunch of burlap bags, feedbags she had, and I think they took some sand away from the horse arena they had down there because they couldn't get stuff in and out of their courtyard, apparently. So, some things need to be tuned up. I personally went and had some sand of my own, got buckets and stuff, and was ready to put a tarp in to take care of my building where I could. But the people were all out there, you know, and they were all helping each other, doing everything they could. It's a lesson to be learned because I could see this being an ongoing thing, hopefully in the future. We will have sandbags in Blue Lake, and people will continue to work together. So it was always good to see the people out there. Good luck with FEMA. We all know that going. They're bragging about having been able to make things faster for individuals, but it doesn't sound like it's going to be any faster for the county.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other, or you want to talk on the public side?
I'll talk on the public side. I can be brief.
Good. I'm only giving you two minutes, you know.
Perfect. So I do want to just briefly address our public assistance thresholds. The new numbers that basically set our threshold for 2024 are $4.60 per resident. So for Humboldt County, we're right in the ballpark of $630,000 to qualify for CDAA or the California Disaster Assistance Act. There was a lot of discussion last year following the earthquake around the really high FEMA thresholds. Well, that's gone up, so now it's, instead of 65 million, it's about 71.4 million. So the chances of us getting federal assistance are pretty slim unless we can get the state to batch our emergency with the late December, early January storms that occurred in southern coastal, coastal region. There's a question about funding opportunities. We do have several projects in our current mitigation plan that focus on road stability, land use policy, and due to the efforts of this board, we now have an allocated position for a climate resiliency officer in our mitigation program in OES that should be starting early next month. With that comes funding opportunities through mitigation, and they say every dollar spent in mitigation is $100 saved in recovery, but those opportunities come at a 25% match. So, I'm just going to put that out there as an opportunity for funding, but it is going to cost the county some upfront money to engage on those projects. If there's any questions, you know how to contact me. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Ryan, I know you burnt the midnight oil this weekend and everything else, so the sheriff is very lucky to have you. We're very lucky to have you. Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, I'll bring it back to the board.
Thank you. I do want to note that we are in an El Nino year, and the projections for this year for rainfall and precipitation were extreme, potentially extreme. So this may not be the only bad storm, unfortunately. And so, you know, I think it's, I think we're, we are likely to need to see more of that short-term resiliency on a neighborhood scale and neighbors helping neighbors. And, you know, we will likely have, you know, plenty of our special services deputies called to action and other, you know, agencies who collaborate with us to keep people safe. So, I appreciate that this was brought so quickly and that we can move on this, and I don't think this is the end for this year. And so, you know, I don't know exactly what the best approach is to help people get ready, but any resources that we can make available to folks to prepare for, you know, I know we do promulgate resources about what to have on hand, you know, have several days worth of food and water and those basic things for essential, you know, preservation of life. But when it comes to flooding and, you know, people seeing unprecedented flooding, you know, any resources that we can share, I'd love to see that, and I'd love to share that with my constituents.
Thank you. I'll move to file. Oh, sorry.
Second.
Move to second. Did you have a comment also?
I did want to say that I do think that it's going to rain a lot this year as predicted, and that we should be prepared. I also wanted to say thank you to Ryan and Sheriff Poncel. You are very lucky to have him. I appreciate that I'm able to call him and really, you know, get that information that I need for my constituents and for the district. And I am, while it's raining a ton, and, but it is warm, I am very glad there's not a ton of snow. So, thank you.
And so the motion is for staff recommendation, right? Okay.
Ready for a roll call?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
And Chair Bone?
Yes, and it's amazing how many people I ran into this weekend said this reminded them of old Humboldt County of 20, 30 years ago. Thank you. Where it rained all year, look back at the rain totals. So, here we go again. With that, thank you, guys. We have a time set for 9:30. Close. DHHS Behavioral Health, and I'm going to ask staff to report on that. Emmy, Ms. Rogers?
I'm good, but I want to get to the time set, so I saw.
Do I need to do something to start the PowerPoint? Do you see it? No?
No.
Now you're seeing it? Okay. There you go. Okay, there it is. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm Emmy Botzler Rogers. I'm the Behavioral Health Director, and I'm here today with two of my deputy directors, Paul Bignacki and Jack Brazil. We're before your board today to provide an update to the assisted outpatient treatment pilot program, which we had promised to come back and report out on, and to review some of the outcomes from the first full year of the AOT operations. We'll also be discussing some additional behavioral health programs and services, along with some related mandates for behavioral health, and then we'll have some discussion around SB 43 and recommendations related to implementation. For some context, I wanted to share a brief look at the adult behavioral health budget. This, this slide shows fiscal year 21, '22, and our adult program costs, which were just under $36.5 million. The distribution of the spending is demonstrated on this slide with adult inpatient services, which is Semproviren's SV, costing over $13.5 million, and adult outpatient costing just over $11 million. Adult residential, which is our overall placement costs, is just under that, at a bit over $7 million. And then in addition to these larger categories, we have a variety of other spending within substance use disorder programs and services, some MHSA prevention funding, and a small amount of discretionary fund. These costs that are demonstrated here include both our program staff and contracted providers. This next slide is really just an opportunity to take a look at the diversity of our programs and our current staffing allocations within adult behavioral health. As you can see, we have just under 300 budgeted positions, and that's spread out broadly across a multitude of programs and services, including SV, as I referenced, adult outpatient, substance use disorder services, as well as just many, 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 as you can see in the colors, smaller and significant programs, like our jail services, our Hope Center, Healthy Moms Program, the Family Wellness Court. CCT, Comprehensive Community Treatment, is a piece of this pie. Medication Support, Performance Management Unit, and Regional Services. So just a wide range of the services and programs that we, that we offer within behavioral health. All right. This next slide is to reference Proposition 1, which is the Mental Health Services Act reform. That will go to the voters in March of this year. This is critical as we think about the landscape of behavioral health, especially since Prop 1 has the potential to substantially impact the work that we do and the funding that we have available. The biggest issues and concerns are that this reform would mean loss of local control. So Prop 1 drastically reduces the local control over the only flexible funding source that we have available to mental health. Prop 1 mandates new spending categories, including 30% of local MHSA dollars being spent on housing, 35% going to full-service partnership, leaving only 35% for local community input. This is pretty impactful, as previous amounts were much larger and all available for local decision-making. So you may recall things like community services and supports, 76% of the funding, which was available for local input, prevention and early intervention at 19%, and innovation projects at 5%, all were subject to local community input. DHHS currently spends more than 30% of local MHSA on housing. However, the new housing category is much more restrictive. So for example, we currently use MHSA to pay for temporary housing in motels. It appears motels won't count as housing under Prop 1. This makes it very, very difficult to be responsible to the unique needs of the individuals we serve in our small, remote, and rural community. Of significance, there will no longer be dedicated MHSA funding for prevention activities or programs. While we're likely able to preserve a couple of our most popular programs under MHSA, for instance, HCTAC and Hope Center, it's unlikely we'll be able to sustain MHSA funding for other prevention projects currently offered by community-based organizations. While counties are still allowed to provide other critical mental health services, like treatment, responding to those in mental health crisis, and outreach for engagement under this proposition, there will be less money overall available, and so something will have to go away. Something will need to be reduced. And then lastly, I just want to flag that Prop reduces the percentage of MHSA funding that comes to counties. As they are now, the state will now take 10% off the top as opposed to 5%. All of these are incredibly impactful to local resources and the ability to roll out new mandates that are often mostly under or unfunded. So I just wanted this to be a bit of the context, too, so as we move into some of our other discussions. If Prop 1 is passed in March, the implementation would be required in 2026. All right, I'm going to pass it to Jack to start talking about AOT.
Thank you, Emmy. So, yeah, thanks for having us back to talk about AOT. We were here back last April, I believe, to give a general update, and now we have some more kind of concrete data, as that program has now been around for a little over 18 months now. As you can see, we started in July of 2022, accepting referrals. In the fiscal year 22, '23, we received 33 referrals. 22 of those met that AOT criteria to be referred on to our provider, EA Family Services, for individuals to actually get services through AOT. In that time, we had one individual who met the criteria for involuntary treatment, which means we petitioned the court to provide that court-ordered treatment for that individual. Most of the other individuals, we were able to engage at some level, some, you know, with greater success than others, but most people were able to get some kind of services from us, and you would improve their outcomes. Here are some of the expenditures that we've had for AOT since the beginning. As you can see, in fiscal year 23, '24, the county general fund contribution is around $380,000. We expect that the total expenditures for AOT will be around $860,000. Some of that comes back to us in Medi-Cal reimbursement, so the services that are provided are Medi-Cal reimbursable for those individuals, a majority of those. And so... And so we, we do make up additional revenue through, through Medi-Cal. And here's some of the outcomes. We thought it would be good to have the board take a look and compare with our, our internal program, Comprehensive Community Treatment, which is very similar to what AOT provides. AOT tends to have smaller caseloads than CCT, but, but intensive case management, intensive services in the community. So very similar. Obviously, the sample size for AOT is a little bit less than, well, a lot less than CCT, but I think we kind of see similar results. We have a decrease in both of those programs with our inpatient stays. That would be, you know, stays at Semper Virens or other psych hospitals. We also see a significant decrease in both those programs with jail nights, which are really the two metrics we're looking at with AOT is, you know, those inpatient and jail nights. Homelessness, we do see an increase, but I think there, I'm not 100% sure why, but I think there's a reporting issue on that. Not every client, every client that comes into AOT is going to self-report their, their homelessness status the year prior. And so when we look at the, the year that they're in right now, working with us, it might look like an, an increase. Having said that, I think, you know, housing is probably one of the, well, I know it is the biggest issue for our AOT program. A lot of our individuals we're meeting in the community, you know, not at their, not at any sort of sheltered residence. We're meeting them, you know, at, at various locations, even in camps and things like that. So, you know, it is an issue for us with AOT, this housing. Okay, I am going to pass it to Paul to talk about inpatient.
Thank you, Jack. The services provided by Semper Virens represent the highest level of behavioral health care available to the community of the North Coast. Since Semper Virens has the distinction of being an acute psychiatric hospital, we were able to leverage multiple funding streams to cover the costs of providing this essential service. These funding streams include Medi-Cal, Medicare, as well as other sources like realignment, MHSA and private insurance. This flexibility in reimbursements allows us to serve more people here in our county. In fiscal year 21, '22, we had 355 admissions to Semper Virens at a total cost of around $9.9 million. In fiscal year 22, '23, we had 254 admissions at a total of cost of $10.8 million. The revenues collected from Medi-Cal, Medicare and private insurance had decreased in fiscal year 22, '23 by 14% collectively from the previous fiscal year, resulting in a larger contribution from MHSA, realignment and county general fund. The other revenue in fiscal year 22, '23 is an increase of 31%, while the total cost was increased by 9%. One aspect of these figures that I'd like to point out is the impact that individuals who are on an LPS conservatorship have on SV bed availability. The Lattimer-Petris Short Act of 1967 was established when the state was deinstitutionalizing individuals with mental and developmental disabilities and set the criteria for involuntary treatment for individuals who are deemed a danger to themselves or a danger to others or gravely disabled. This regulation established a due process for conserved individuals that met this specific criteria. So in fiscal year 21, '22, conserved individuals who met this criteria on Semper Virens had an average length of stay of 21.2 days compared to the non-LPS conserved individuals who had an average length of stay of 8.3 days. In fiscal year 22, '23, conserved individuals had an increase in the length of stay to an average of 38.8 days compared to the non-conserved individuals with an average length of stay of 12.5. On any given day on SV, LPS conserve patients who are ready for discharge to a lower level of care occupy 55% to 75% of the available beds on Semper Virens. This is due to, due to the lack of availability of the appropriate step down beds and facilities around the state. As a result, these occupied beds on SV, we send individuals out of county for care. In fiscal year 21, '22, we had a total of 208 admissions and in fiscal year 22, '23, we had a total of 225 admissions to out of county hospitals. In fiscal year 22, '23, we utilized 34 different hospitals around the state to treat Humboldt County beneficiaries who are in need of acute psychiatric care. We do look forward to Willow Glen and Sorrel Leaf's establishment of crisis residential programs for adults and childrens, as well as the soon to be constructed Crisis Triage Center that will assist getting patients to the right level of care in our county and free up more beds on Semper Virens in an effort to provide these higher level of care to those most in need. So I'll pass this back to Jack.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. So we wanted to talk to the board a little bit about our placement. So when we talk about placements, we're talking about long-term care for those LPS clients that originate largely on Semper Virens. And when they are ready for discharge for step down, they enter into a long-term care. Those facilities that we place them at are very costly for county behavioral health, both in terms of just revenue for their board and care, but also, you know, in terms of energy and effort by our staff, both at Behavioral Health and the Public Guardians Office. As you can see, this, the increase just from fiscal year 2019 to 2023 here, we've seen a, a large increase. I, I believe from '22 to '23, the, we just saw an 18% increase on its own and this number continues to grow. The lack of available beds, as Paul kind of spoke to, that's why individuals are getting stuck up at SV because there's just not beds to place people at. But even then, you know, we're looking at the cost of having to do that with these increased numbers. That number 140 there that you see for, that's the number of LPS conserve clients that we had during that fiscal year on average. So kind of looking at our Public Guardian Office and it's work here with behavioral health. The Public Guardian has four deputy public guardians. They have an average, they have, we have an average of about 150 LPS conserved in Humboldt. That's a moment in time here today. And in addition to those, there's also 213 probate conserve clients. So those are going to be individuals who suffer from dementia, who we are also responsible to provide care for. We don't have to provide the cost of their placement, but we do have to provide the oversight for those cases. Based upon a grand jury investigation that was done in 2000, 2019, their, their report indicated that the, the rates for conserved clients in Humboldt County was higher than in other counties in California. And we believe that, you know, to be true across the board with LPS and probate. One of the issues with Public Guardians Office is that they do not provide, the state or federal government does not provide any, any funding to support the Public Guardians Office and the county general fund contribution to social services to support this, this brand, this program, Public Guardian program has been the same since 2013. And I will pass it to Emmy. Sorry, back Paul.
Thanks, Jack. Oh, sure. How about that? So other current issues that we're facing in behavioral health are the pressure that we've been feeling from the Department of State Hospitals for individuals that are deemed incompetent to stand trial for felony, who are on felony charges. In fiscal year 21, '22, we had 55 IST referrals and we sent 20 of those individuals that we had referrals to, to the state hospital. And in fiscal year 22, '23, we had 48 referrals so far, with 19 being sent to the Department of State Hospital. We have an average wait time for transportation of two to three days. However, the waitlist for state hospitals is significant. We are fortunate enough to have a jail-based competency treatment program here in the jail. So we're able to divert some of these individuals from state hospital for local treatment. The state hospital system department is, is really relying on counties to provide more options for folks that are, that are IST. And what they've done is they've issued a notification to counties, putting a capitation on the number of individuals that can be sent to the state hospital. Our number for Humboldt County this year is 33. If we go over that number and send more individuals to the state hospital than 33, we'll be penalized for that coming out of our local funds. Those funds go into an account and to be paid back to the county to focus on community-based restoration programs. So this is a significant shift from how things have been going and this does require a lot of county systems to lift these programs up. We are taking advantage of opportunities, funding opportunities that present themselves as best that we can. And we've also established a working group to work on this solution. Another big program that's facing our county this year is the introduction of Care Court. This is, the governor passed the CARE Act last year and it requires all counties to implement an AOT-like program called Care Court. It stands for Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment Act. So this, what this does, which is a little bit different than the AOT program, is that petitioners can petition to the court for somebody to be treated voluntarily. And those individuals that can petition to the court to have somebody treated for voluntary treatment could be family members, it could be a roommate and it could be EMS. So it broadens who can make those petitions now to the court for somebody to have treatment. The initial cohort existed of seven counties throughout the state. We've been watching those seven counties and paying attention and learning from their examples and the, the challenges that they faced. And we've been hearing some interesting facts from those counties. Not only do counties have to set up a separate court system to, court calendar, sorry, for, to handle cases through Care Court, it comes with limited funding. And there's a significant amount of resources that the county needs to put forward to get these program, this program up and running, including a significant lift for behavioral health. Since behavioral health, county behavioral health will be the ones doing most of the assessment and treatment planning and reporting back to the state for this service. This service is for a limited number and types of individuals. So the, the target population is individuals with schizophrenia and other psychotic disorders. These are individuals that are undertreated or refusing treatment. Our Humboldt County is cohort two. So our mandate is to implement this program by December 1st, 2024. There's, like I said, there's very limited funding to this program to lift this up. We've started regular meetings with, with groups here in the county. Those groups consist of the courts, the public defenders, the district attorney's office, county council, conflict council, behavioral health and some others. This is going to be a big lift for counties to, especially our county, and it's going to impact multiple departments throughout our system. I'll pass the time over to Emmy.
Okay, I'm going to now turn our attention to SB 43. Many of you are aware of SB 43, which makes several significant changes to the state's involuntary detention and conservatorship laws. SB 43 expands the state's gravely disabled criteria to allow for the involuntary detention and conservatorship of individuals on the basis of a standalone severe substance use disorder or a co-occurring severe substance use disorder with a mental health disorder. It also expands the definition of grave disability to include individuals who are unable to provide for their basic personal need for personal safety or necessary medical care. This is in addition to the previous definition, which was being unable to provide for food, shelter and clothing. It defines medical, necessary medical care to mean care that a licensed healthcare practitioner determines to be necessary to prevent serious deterioration of an existing medical condition. SB 43 requires counties to consider less restrictive alternatives such as AOT and Care Court in conducting conservatorship investigations. SB 43 also expands reporting requirements to align with the new criteria and allows county, counties to delay implementation until January 1, 2026 through adoption of a county board resolution. So I wanted to just talk a little bit more in detail about some of these elements. By expanding LPS to capture any person who has a severe substance use disorder, this change in policy will significantly expand the portion of the population potentially subject to detention and conservatorship under LPS, from about 1% of the population to about 10% of the population. That's a huge, huge increase. Not only is it a huge number of individuals who would then qualify to be conserved and treated, there is a substantial lack of facilities to provide these services and virtually none for the SUD population. The scarcity of SUD residential and inpatient treatment capacity is across the state. Also, there is lack, lacking evidence of long-term recovery success for those who are forced into SUD treatment and substantial risk for those individuals, including increased overdose and a higher frequency of death upon discharge from these programs. I feel like I always need to flag the risk for consumers because it's such a critical element from my perspective about how we treat, we treat people who are suffering with SUD. The impact of SB 43 is far reaching with requirements and additional resources needed for public defender's office, the courts, public guardian, county council, behavioral health and county general fund. There will be huge impact on SUD services and workforce, along with a whole new requirement for capacity that will need to be built out with medical providers and hospitals for the new necessary medical care evaluation component. That, that, that element is not within the scope of county behavioral health. And then there's the impacts to the systems that you heard talked about earlier, how impacted we are on SV, the number of placements we have, the number of people we need to send out of county to get services. All those, all those individuals will be increasing with SB 43. All of these things will, will require counties to develop an extensive array of new policies, procedures, workforce and treatment capacity in order to implement SB 43. And SB 43 does not come with dedicated state funding to support these expanded obligations. 55 counties so far in, in the state of California have requested and received permission to delay implementation. There are two counties that chose to go ahead with implementation, but the other 56 were before your board today. The other 55 have already requested and received implement, delay, approval to delay implementation. So that's what we're here to request today. We need additional time to arrange for staffing, resources, infrastructure and all the things referenced above to support successful effect and effective implementation. And so, as I said, DHHS Behavioral Health is requesting delayed implementation until 1, 1/26. And I have to add, two years does not seem like enough time. So with that, I will leave it open for comments, questions, whatever your board chooses.
I'll bring it back. Supervisor Madrum?
Thank you for that detailed report. It's a lot of information and we certainly got our challenges ahead of us, don't we? I do note that the 33 seems a lot higher than what we originally estimated that might participate in the program. If I go back a couple of years, I think the numbers were somewhat low. But at any rate, I appreciate the hard work. I think behavioral health and this board have a lot of work to do to try and figure out where we're going. I hope even with the changes at Mad River Hospital, we'll be able to maintain the momentum for the Triage Center. I know, and I I know, and I know you're proactively working to try and maintain all of that, so I just want to thank you for your efforts. I'm sure this stuff is saving some lives, frankly, you know, and it's important, but how do we fund it? How do we make all this work? So, thank you for your presentation.
Supervisor Row.
Thank you for this. I know as decision-makers, we're supposed to be logical and make great policy decisions based on facts, and I have to say that this particular presentation really touches something different. I, I don't know what it is about it. I think it's just having toured your facilities, met your team, seeing the, what is it, a 25% increase between 2019 and this year in the number of, what was the acronym, LPS, individuals you're serving, and then thinking about, you know, the facts with mandatory SUD treatment, and, you know, there's just something that, something very moving about how hard you all work. I think it's a very underappreciated field of work in behavioral health, because people are so impacted by, you know, their friends and loved ones struggling, not having clear next steps at all times, and, and because we see the impact so much in our community. But I, I see how hard you're working, and I thank you for that. I'm supportive of this recommendation, and I also wanted to ask you to elaborate a little bit about the SUD treatment piece that you talked about, because one of the top things I hear from community members is why can't you force people into substance use treatment? That is, one of the things people come and say to me, and I'm sure to all of us as decision-makers frequently, is why don't you just force them to do it? You know it's bad for them to be using substances. And you talked about the risk of overdose, and I'm, I'm reading in between, in between the lines here and assuming that that's because when people know they're about to be mandated into treatment, they go ahead and use a lot. Is that, can you say a little bit more about that, though?
Sure, and I, you know, I think there's probably lots of different perspectives on this. What I am referencing is, you know, my perspective, that people who are using substances have trauma, have underlying trauma, and so until that piece is addressed and treated, it's very hard to stop using substances. But if people are threatened with other consequences if they don't go into treatment or if they don't stop using, then they will stop using for the length of time that's required, that they're being mandated to do that. But once they're done with that treatment and they leave, most likely they will return to using unless some other work has been done and they've, they've made some other changes. When they go back to using, their tolerance is lower, they're going to use again, they're going to think they can use it the same rate or amount, and then that's where the risk of overdose, and, and like I said, often death comes, comes into play.
All right, thank you. I think on the surface, this is one where people would go, SB 43 sounds great, we love that idea, and I think you did a phenomenal job of explaining why it's incredibly challenging to implement, and so anyway, I support what you're bringing forward, but I also wanted to thank you for the hard work you do and encourage people, you know, who might be listening to this or learning about it later, to really try to analyze the situation with a big-picture view. It's very hard when you're impacted every day by people who aren't a tough spot and are not behaving in a way that you see as appropriate, but this is, this is so complicated, and I really appreciate the work you do.
Can I ask for a public comment on this item? Nikki, do we have anybody on the phone?
Thank you, Chair Bone. No, we have no hands up.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Got to pull my pants up before they fall down.
Pull your pants up and drop your mic down, and we'll be good to go.
Oh, yeah. God, Rick, I got more problems than a math book. I don't even know where to start. Thank you for the two minutes. I won't take them all, I'll just tell you, God bless you, Emmy. I know your dad from the Human Rights Commission. We are a community to be proud of. We're working hard to save our loved ones here, and, and y'all know that I have, I am living a success story with my daughter. She made my sandwich, she said, Mom, it's too cold, you don't need to go. I said, yes, honey, I do, but I promised her tonight I'd zoom in about the Jacob site. Y'all, we're getting there. It's slow, it's methodical, it's heartbreaking, but we're making progress, and I thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen from the board, my name is Vernon Price, I'm standing here before you as lived experience of substance use disorder and mental illness. Senate Bill 43, signed by the Governor October, will be, will make substantial changes to California's involuntary commitment law. Most significantly, Senate Bill 43 expands the categories of individuals who may be subject to involuntary commitment by broadening the definition of gravely disabled under state law. In adopting this challenge, the legislature provides counties with the ability to prepare for and implement the expanded definition over a two-year period, significantly while other provisions of Senate Bill 43 will take effect on January 1st, 2024. The law authorizes county boards of supervisors to adopt resolution establishing a timeline to implement the expanded gravely disabled. My ask today is to go with the recommendations to defer this so we will be able to have the infrastructure, so we'll be able to do things here in our county without having to send people out of county. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair Bone.
I'm sorry.
Never mind.
Director Beck.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, Emmy and her staff, thank you, Natalie, for speaking on, on their behalf because it is really important. They do amazing work. I also wanted to say that Kelly Schwartz is here in the audience, she's our public guardian, and without her and her staff, we wouldn't be able to do a lot of the work that we do around conservatorship, so I just want to thank her also. And then just say, you know, for the record, this, the changes in behavioral health coming up are going to really impact our county council, our courts, our law enforcement, you know, our, our emergency departments, all, all of those areas are going to be affected even more so than they are now. So I just want to, you know, shout out to our courts and other staff that have actually been meeting with us regularly on Care Court now, and just bracing for the work that we'll need to do going forward. So, thank you.
Connie, did you, did you want to say anything about Care Court or any of that?
Well, I can mention that a few of us were in Mendocino County on Friday and met with a number of representatives throughout the region. We will have regular, well, we have another meeting coming up, and then we'll just, we feel like we're kind of in this together. Small counties and Humboldt will be working together on some of the issues that may be tougher for smaller counties than others in the state.
I was, I was really impressed with the turnout. I mean, with Luke Branfield, our public defender, Judge Price, you, our CAO, Jessica, there was a good turnout by Humboldt County, and McGuire, Senator McGuire gave a presentation on what's to expect and everything, so thank you guys for attending. It's just, we're putting in the work, it's just, we're hoping for the results to start accumulating, and we're seeing that slowly but surely.
And thank you for mentioning our public defender, because yes, he was there, and he's going to be instrumental in, in the process for Care Court, so thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell, then Medron.
It's all right.
That's where I kicked you to the curb, didn't I?
Yeah, you sure did. Used to it. All right. First of all, I'm happy to start this by making a motion for staff recommendation, and then I would like to speak to that motion.
I'll second it just for discussion.
Thank you. I want to say that this entire network of, of behavioral and mental health services is just essential to our, just to our public health and welfare within the county. And as you can see, and we talked, there's numbers attached to this. Our budgets are moral documents. They push and pull at the very values of our, of what we do and all the sort of conflicting priorities, and this one is really, it hits to a really essential core because mental health issues and hit every family, I think, as far as I can tell. I mean, it just, it just is, it, no one escapes this in terms of touching their lives. So I think it's, it's pretty, it's, it is very, very important. What I really like about this presentation is it speaks deep, you know, to the most, to the most critical and parts of that, and, and the, the most chronic issues around mental health, and, and so I want to thank you for all, for all that information, but also just really all the work and the network of people working on it. I really am, my emphasis these days is really on the sorrel project and the, the triage center. I think, I do, and you've been, we talked about, a lot about this before, every year, all the time, but I, I think that those two projects are essential in this, in this moment because we need those facilities to not just help folks in those times of crisis, but they are, they are, they will be essential in, in sort of lessening the load on our medical system in general, and people are very stressed about what's happening in our ERs and what's happening at our hospitals and even, even just trying to get appointments for anything whatsoever. And those, those two projects, I think, will really help, I know they will really help lessen it, so I want to make sure that we rally around those two things and get them, get them done, as two kind of points of, of progress that I think we really need to work on. That being said, I'm supportive of this motion today. I think there are high expectations from the public at large, and I don't just mean Humboldt County, but the state and the nation around what we should be doing around public health. Those, our budgets do not meet our expectations, and we really need to work on that. And that has a lot to do with, again, a sort of moral issue that we have within our nation around where we spend our money and who we tax and how we tax. And so I think this is a key to, this is a piece to that, but just bringing it back, those two projects is what I think we're going to focus on next, hopefully getting a little breathing room by backing off on this, on this SB 43. So, thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I want to thank you guys for your continued work, and I know that Laura's Law was something that we took a risk on, and, you know, we were told that possibly it wouldn't work for a large number of folks like we wanted, but I do know that, and like Holly says, you know, if you're the person or the family that's in the middle of it and living it, one person does matter, and, and the help that they can get, sometimes with the laws that come forward, they want to group people into one scenario and say everyone's the same, and that's just not the truth, and oftentimes why this type of stuff doesn't work is that people are individual regardless of their situation, and we don't treat them, the states, the counties sometimes don't treat them as individuals and realize that their problems are individual, no matter what they are, if it's homelessness, if it's drug addiction, and I know, you know, it's expensive, and we took this $400,000 out of our general fund, and people, you know, say, but it's only going to affect or efficiently work for 12 people. Those 12 people matter, and I know, you know, we struggle as counties and states to find the, the resources and the ways to do things, but I, and I'm supportive of putting this off till 2026, and I wish when laws came forward that they recognized that it's people and that there always is a cost behind it, and that they would appropriately send these SBs, ABs, whatever they're sending our way, and say, here, here's a mechanism, here's some funding to help with that, because saying, you have to implement this with no funding on a county, every county in California that's already stressed financially, it's, it's good on paper, it doesn't work, you know, when you try to implement it. So I am also supportive of this, and thank you for the efforts you guys made with Laura's Law, and I know that, you know, while the impact isn't large, it does matter.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Well, it seems it's a day for heroes. You know, earlier we were honoring deputies and roads crews, but I just want to say Connie, Emmy, Paul, Jack, and all of your staff, and all of your partners are true heroes, you know, out there trying to protect our community and help those individuals where they're at, so thank you for that. And later today with Measure Z, we're going to be talking about other heroes with the fire services, so I would say today is a day to honor the heroes in our community, and thank you for that.
Thank you, and Emmy, appreciate, appreciate you guys, what you're doing. What we hear up here, as we sit up here, as Supervisor Arroyo mentioned, people look to us for a lot of the answers, and they don't see what happens behind the scenes. They see what happens out here, they see what everything else, but they need us to fix situations. I mean, I still think we're the smallest county in the state with an SVU, if I'm not wrong. So we've always, and it's been there for a long time, we've always been committed to this issue. The issue has got extreme, and I think that's from chemical use and, and other aspects, I'm sure. 15% of our employee base is at adult mental health. I mean, 15%. So we are putting up an effort forward on so many aspects, and we're, and the, the one slide you put up that looked like a carousel on steroids with eight, I don't know how you found that many different color patterns, kind of shows how many different angles we're trying to solve these issues at, from the ground up, and, I mean, that didn't have a lot of the youth-based stuff on there, so appreciate what you're doing. As all the other supervisors said, it's not glamorous work, you don't get your picture in the paper, you get, you, when things go bad, you get put in the paper. You don't, the success stories do not come forward, and we heard of a couple success stories, success stories today that were a big deal. And as Supervisor, Supervisor Bushnell said, if you make a difference in one person, you've made a difference, because it's important to that one person, so. With that, I think we're ready to take a vote. We have a motion on the table.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Medron.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
And Chair Bone.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, guys. And with that, I'm going to backtrack a little and do a public comment on non-agend items. I wanted to get our time set because we had so much staff here. So is there anybody online? We'll give them a couple of seconds, Nick.
Yeah, we'll give them a minute.
We'll give them 30 seconds to get on. We'll give them 30 seconds to get on. All right. We'll move to the dais. And if somebody comes up, we'll make an exception. Please.
Good morning, Supervisors and the public. I was horrified to recently get a letter from AT&amp;T saying that they were planning on asking the California Public Utilities Commission to remove all landlines from many areas in California, including just about all of Humboldt County. Now, while many people think that landlines are obsolete, they are the only means of communication in many areas of Humboldt, not just in remote areas, but in places where the topography is just not suitable for cellular communication. This includes many neighborhoods and towns and villages throughout Humboldt. There are a great many people who depend on landlines for their everyday phone calls as well as medical emergencies and calls to 911 if they are necessary. Even people with cell phones note that either their service disappears altogether or becomes almost unusable when the power goes out, which unfortunately happens here all too often. We cannot afford to let these companies, or AT&amp;T, I guess is one company, take our landlines away. They will be having a series of public hearings in February and March, but the closest one will be in Ukiah. There are none being held in the upper third of the state. There are also provisions for two call-in meetings in March, or you can send them a letter or an email. All rural counties should be up in arms about this. And I hope that Supervisor Bone, as our county representative to the RCRC, which defends the interests of rural counties, will make sure that other rural counties are knowledgeable about this fiasco and willing to do something about it. I'm also asking our supervisors here in Humboldt to contact the Public Utilities Commission and tell them what a bad idea this is. And I have some paperwork which I will distribute to you, which you can distribute to the supervisor.
Thank you. And we appreciate you for calling that out. And yes, RCRC is on that because AT&amp;T is not the only phone supplier that's trying to pull this.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing that forward. I do want to say that I contacted Supervisor, excuse me, Senator McGuire's office yesterday around this issue to get a meeting together with the CPUC. So, thank you for the public comment.
Next.
People who want to get ahold of me use my landline because the cellphone doesn't work frequently. I did wish to make comment and I want to help the public, maybe the people in the room here. It's been mentioned that road tax or other taxes may be brought forward by the county to be on the November ballot. And I don't know how many people, and I could say it's none of them in the room here actually know where Measure S has been spent. If you're going to bring something to us as far as any kind of tax measure, we were promised the fact that we would know where that tax was, which I think, I've heard different figures, 42 million, 49 million. But nobody can tell us where that's been spent. Unless that transparency happens, your chance of passing a tax is going to be minimal. We expect the transparency that was promised. And so, this being taxed goes both ways. You're going to find that there's going to be a ton of taxes coming in on November. Our taxes are going up here and we don't seem to be getting any additional services. Our system seems to be extremely broken here. In Mexico, we don't pay for trash pickup. That's part of what's paid for. Our medical expenses are next to nothing compared to here. Their government seems to work, but ours is failing us. So, I strongly suggest that you, being Executive Director of a Taxpayer's League, I can speak that if you wish to have our support and have the taxpayer's support, we are going to require transparency on Measure S. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. James Chaffee, I think we've been offered three minutes in the past. If we're offered only two minutes now, I think that's a shame. I'll try to edit this on the fly. You see somebody come to complain about the lack of public service at the Humboldt Law Library. From your perspective, you see some riffraff who probably doesn't smell good and a small couple of people maybe going to Hawaii on a book budget and one guy with a no-show job. Well, what about the big red flag? The big red flag is who got the law librarian's job? He's a very well-credentialed individual in the area of pre-K, early childhood development. Now, that's a very legitimate field, but librarianship is a very legitimate field. Legal research is a very legitimate field and there's very little overcap with early childhood development. How did somebody get that job? Well, it turns out that that person is himself a member of the Board of Trustees of the Law Library. In other words, they appointed one of their own members and a person that you recently appointed on January 9 to the board. They basically gave that position to themselves. Now, there's a lot of people who don't care about the law. There are a lot of people who don't care about civil rights, but they all care about mismanagement. Not only that, but that appointment was not on the list of local appointments, which is a violation of California Government Code 54972. Not only do you give jobs to your friends, you violate statute, state statute to do it.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll close public comment on non-agend items. And move on to the public hearing. It's been requested to take a quick break, so seven minutes, we will start back at 10:45, whether you're in your chairs or not. We proceed forward.
Thank you, Chair. John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. And I need to introduce the item first, which is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to appeal the approval of a tentative subdivision map and also a plan of development. Before we get too far along, what I'd like to do is apologize to you and the appellant and the applicant and the concerned public. Staff did not include the appellant's appeal information in the agenda packet.
Excuse me. We've opened the public hearing.
We have opened the public hearing.
I opened the public hearing, yes. I was passing it on to John. John said it, so I was going to just, you know. Thanks. Scott's a stickler I keep forgetting.
So, let me just say, we did not intend to not include the appellant's information in the agenda packet, and that can't be corrected today.
Understood.
So, what we are asking to do is to have this continued. A special meeting on Friday, January 26th, has been discussed. I think that the proposed time is 11 o'clock in the morning. So, we're asking for a continuance to January 26th at 11 a.m. Today will allow public input, but it will not include presentations by staff, the applicant or the appellant. Those will all be provided on Friday. Again, I do want to apologize for this terrible inconvenience to everyone in the room. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And 11 o'clock was your list, so we could do it? Because we're shooting for nine, but I guess 11 is going to be the number.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Is it loving fine with everybody? All right. Hang on. I bet we're going to answer before we're done. Sure.
Is if you have a meeting at 11 a.m. and all this input needs to be put in, you stop at noon and then it's canceled? Any other further comments?
Can you come to the mic? Like I said, it was going to be answered, but go ahead.
Hello, my name is Nancy Kiber. If you have the meeting at 11 a.m., will you have time for all the comments? If you have the meeting at 9, that might give the people involved enough time to speak.
We're going to have the meeting at 11 and complete the meeting if it takes to 3 or 4 o'clock. There's no, there's no drop, I don't know, there's no drop dead date. And what we're going to do is we're going to allow people to public comment today on what is in front of us. And then, we're going to give you another shot to comment again on Friday because it's going to substantially change with the appellant's information included. So.
Chair, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you intend on Friday that a public comment will also be two minutes?
No, I will allow three minutes on Tuesday.
Okay.
I mean, on Friday.
Did I say Tuesday?
No, I didn't. My mistake.
Oh, Friday. Okay.
Today, it was limited to two minutes because we thought we had a very, very busy schedule. So, we posted it for two minutes. I don't like two minutes, but we posted it for two minutes for the basic reason there was a full schedule with the behavioral health, Measure Z, and closed sessions. So, to accommodate staff, we went to two minutes on the public comment. That won't be the issue on Friday, so you will get a full three minutes. Supervisor Arroyo.
One more clarifying question. Will we have Zoom as an alternative for people if they want to participate in that way to provide comment?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
It's going to be, it's going to be a noticed meeting. Any other questions? Okay, great. With that, I'll bring it back to, basically, there are no presentations. We'll just bring it straight to public comment. And if you would, if you'd line up like three at a time so we can just, you know, would be great. Thank you very much.
My name is Carol and my mom and I live in a mobile home abutting the west side of the proposed development. I firmly support additional housing, but I oppose the division of the subdivision of the parcel into 19 lots that could each be sold and have different landlords, creating a dilemma regarding the responsibility for maintaining the laundry facility, jack road, the garbage area, grain area, shared parking, et cetera. Fairly equivalent housing can still be built if the parcel remains one lot, but without all of the exceptions, use permits, et cetera, that have been given, it would have to be done within the law. The Coalition for Responsible Housing is asking that all involved be held accountable to build responsibly by upholding laws, codes, and regulations that are in place. We did not question the R3 zoning. We pointed out that the property is actually zoned R3D, which requires a design review. We understand that we are entitled to a design review by a district-based committee, and we look forward to the findings of that review. The height and length of the proposed structures will reduce the amount of sunlight and warmth to tiny backyards of our mobile homes, and gardening is enjoyed by many seniors who are otherwise limited. Due to different distances from the fence lines, some homes will be partially shaded. All backyards will be shaded except for about one hour per day. Some seniors who have enjoyed decades of their lives in our peaceful community may spend their end-of-life years in complete misery if the subdivision is approved as is. Please consider requiring a discretionary permitted wall between the development and the mobile home park to mitigate noise as non-auditory effects of noise can cause adverse problems. We are proud homeowners of affordable and well-maintained mobile homes. Please don't discount us. This is my dream home by the ocean. These monolithic structures will loom over my home. The east, north, and south sides of the parcel have roads for buffers. Please consider single-story units on the west side behind the mobile homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, thank you. My name is Anne Kim. I live in Crystal Way of Gwyn Road. We and our neighbors are in full support of building more safe and affordable housing in our community. I'm here pleading to please consider ours and future residents' need to preserve and hopefully improve the safety, health, aesthetics, and general well-being as you review this project. Please. I completely agree with the comments made by Planning Commissioner Peggy O'Neill, the only commissioner who voted against the plan at the hearing on November 16th last year. And I would like to read her statement from the recording of that meeting. And I quote, "I live in McKinneyville and disclose that it seems like a lot of burden needs to put on McKinneyville for development, providing multiple housing units, increased density. It's been going on for a number of years, but I don't see the commitment from the county to improve our roads. I'm concerned that there's not a lot of offset improvements required in this project." It's been going on, similar projects that I mentioned earlier that I participated in, we had to put millions of dollars in offset improvements to be able to do half the units that are being done here. And I know that's a burden on development, but we have no improvements going on in McKinneyville. For those of us that live there, the roads aren't improving, the walkability is not improving. We've done a few bike lanes down the main street, but that's about it. And so, I'm concerned about the lack of improvement and I'm concerned about the lack of parking spaces, the lack of amenities. And I know we discussed the other projects. We increased some units in the mobile home park in McKinneyville, and they had to do trails and things on site where there's nothing like that here. So, I do agree that we need more housing, but not at the expense of our community and, you know, aesthetics in our community. I sympathize with the people that are going to see the impact, even though it may be zoned for multifamily. It does not have to have this type of...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Stuart Jewell. I live at 1795 Pickett Road. I'm right across from the proposed development. Every car leaving Jack Way will shine the lights right into my living room. So, I am very much one of the people Commissioner O'Neill is referring to when she speaks about the impact of this project. So, I would like to continue reading Commissioner O'Neill's comments from the November meeting. As I quote, "I know the service district does a great job of trying to fill in for the county, but we don't have that much law enforcement and we don't have great roads. We don't have good bike paths and we don't have a lot of things. I don't like the fact that we don't know who owns Gwyn Road. That seems to be something we need to figure out because somebody owns the land underneath it, if the county doesn't. So, we probably need to know the answer to that before we go forward. Or else, I would, I wouldn't even think that you would, should be able to use the access to Gwyn Road with this subdivision. It would have to go up the other way, Pickett Road, and then that's going to be a big impact on them. Everyone wants a car. You might want to say that you want to have a walkable community. It sounds really good, but everybody's got two cars in every household, it seems like. There might be a few people in there that don't have a car, but most people have at least two. And then, if they have a guest over, there is no place for them to park. So, it is, just becomes a big hassle, hazard if you're walking through the subdivision with that many cars and that lack of spaces. Those are some of the comments. I hate to keep saying, gee, we need more housing, so we got...
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Thanks for listening.
You bet. Welcome.
Good evening or afternoon. My name is Ben Shepherd. I am not a resident of McKinneyville now. I live in Beatrice, and you all know where that is. I have a long history in McKinneyville. I served on both of the two CACs that developed the McKinneyville Plan. I served on the McKinneyville Community District Board for 20 years, and I served five years on the Planning Commission, plus I also chaired the McKinneyville Municipal Advisor Committee. What strikes me about this project is that when we developed, let's see, the McKinneyville Plan, we did not envision today's market. And let me give you an example. I went on to Zillow and I found a house on Chapparol in McKinneyville, JLF Construction, Jim Fertoto Home. This house is 1,388 square feet. It's a 3 and 2. It's a 3 and 2. The sales history on this is very interesting. It was sold in 1997 for $120,500. And that was a fair price at that time, achievable for working families. It sold again in 2006 for $310,000. Again, achievable at that time. It's currently on the market today for $525. That's out of the scope for most working families. I believe that this project implements the policies and the housing element. It provides for infill and close proximity to town center. And I respectfully request that you deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Jim Gabel, and I live off of Gwynne Road. My family and I recently moved here from Southern California after falling in love with the serene beauty and quaint charm of Humboldt County. Since moving here, we've been passionately promoting our newfound community to our conscious younger friends and family members, especially professionals and those with means, both for our own selfish reasons as well as for our community. We were shocked and disillusioned by the hasty approval by the Planning Commission of a poorly planned and overly dense Valadeo subdivision, which we think will degrade our safety and quality of life here significantly. We recently learned that Gwynne Road was gifted to the county by the Gwynne family, but due to the cost of improvements and the removal of old trailers, it's never been added to its maintenance schedule. Even though the county uses the road to allow public access to the parking lots at Pearson Park and the teen center, and has a school bus route, and in the plans for the McKinleyville Town Center project, the county seems unwilling or unable to take responsibility for maintaining it. Gwynne Road is already a very congested and dangerous road for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. If this project is approved, potentially 400 to 600 more cars a day will be using it, depending on how many times a day an additional 100 cars will go up and down it. I know we use it at least a few times a day. Also, there's a 40-foot public utility easement planned on the Gwynne Road side of this project, so big utility trucks will also be going up and down Gwynne Road as well. According to HCC 325-7, we looked it up, if the county is going to approve the subdivision, it must either take responsibility for maintaining the road it owns or deny the subdivision. I mean, that's the law. We're asking you to please follow the law and consider the public safety impact if you're going to improve the current plan of this project. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Linda Barney, and the recent Planning and Building Department document regarding this hearing claims the primary reason for the PUD approach is to allow greater flexibility in developer financing. Page four of file number 24-99. "We shouldn't have to pay for the developers' flexible financing with our safety, comfort, loss of natural light, and diminished quality of life." Excuse me. "The entire community is being asked to pay for the developers' flexible financing. Pearson Park, with the beautiful eastern view, is a significant benefit to surrounding businesses, when hundreds of people at a time, including tourists, attend festivals, concerts, and annual events in Pearson Park. The view should not be obstructed by giant two-story monoliths." HCC 31.1.6.1.3 states, "The height of buildings constructed near ridgeline should not affect the ridgeline silhouette. The ridgeline is beautiful from Central Avenue also. Please plan ahead for an engaged community's town center. The Planning Department based their decision on the developers' need for financing for this project. A for-profit business, the developer should not be exempt from following building guidelines, especially to the detriment of our neighborhood and McKinneyville's growing town center." Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the extra time on Friday, because I'm going to jump right to page two, because I can talk about everything else on Friday instead. So, I'm Cindy Condit. I live on flooded Stevens Way right now, and yeah, you've been getting stuff from me about the flood, and I want to thank you for your attention to that and some of the changes. And in your resolution that you were going to be voting on today, I'm going to jump to page two, and I've highlighted some stuff for you. The Owners Association for PUDs, Section 314, blah, blah, blah. You're finding the project complies with Section 314 of the Humboldt County Code through the required condition to form a nonprofit incorporated owners' association or alternative acceptable or county council to provide for improving operating, maintaining, yada, yada, yada. Evidence A, Condition of Approval 23 requires the formation. Part B, Condition 23 requires an HOA. Down on C, Conditions also include the requirement, the key word here is requirement, and that HOA is really, really, really important. The formation, according to your resolution, the formation of the Homeowners Association, a nonprofit incorporated owners' association, is required. Right now, there's only one property owner, so that should be really easy to get a group together. There may be up to 19 in the future. So there's no reason to resort to the phrase "or alternative acceptable to county council." That's in line three. So I would ask that you remove, and this is written at the bottom of your paper there, remove the words "or alternative acceptable to county council," because it's such a small group anyway, and add in there where it says "to," but not limited to, and add into that at the end where it says "three" on that line, drainage and detention systems, or further down, use the term "storm water management system."
See you Friday.
But that was it. That was the last period. So thank you very much.
Does that mean I'm not going to see you Friday?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'll just... So see you Friday. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Dennis Henderson. I'm a resident nearby this development. Noticing a news today, the Jacobs School site in Eureka is going to be developed by a developer, and the public says they're going to collaborate with the public from the design stage. What we're asking in this appeal, among other things, is to honor our request for a design review so we can have that collaboration finally before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Barbara Georgiana, and I live on Pickett Road, two parcels east of the proposed development. I've lived here 19 years, and the neighborhood has been relatively peaceful and safe. I recognize the county's need for affordable housing, but don't ask my neighborhood to help meet a county housing quota. I'm hopeful that you will decide to decrease the number of parcels and buildings in this project so that all residents are able to park on site. The project currently was given an exception for required parking. The exception has potential for creating a hazardous safety situation for neighbors and subdivision residents. Additionally, the proposed map does not show any allocation for handicap parking spaces, which is a resident safety concern. According to the submitted map, Valadeo is required to provide 134 parking spaces inside the development. He shows 86 spaces, or 64 percent. That means 36 percent of the residents of his development will have to find parking on the street. He got an exception for this. The additional on-street parking on both Pickett and Gwynne will create a dangerous safety issue for traffic flow, bicycle riders and walkers, many of whom are children and older adults. They will have to navigate an increased number of vehicles driving and parking on the street. If I were a resident of the subdivision, I would not be happy to carry my groceries a significant distance to my apartment. I looked at other housing developments in McKinneyville, one on Margolane, one on North Central Avenue, and they did not have off-street parking. Their handicap, they had handicap parking spaces. Furtado-Hartwood subdivision has ample parking and designated handicap parking. Older developments on Sutter Road, such as Sandpaper Apartments, Redwood Creek Apartments, all have appropriate housing. I hope you reject the exceptions to this and decrease the density. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Kel Osboy, and I live at 2141 Pillar Drive, a few blocks away from the development. And my comments are mainly to the admission of the response by the Arcata Fire Department or Fire District. California Code for the Fire Code, Section 102.5, refers back to the residential code of, which would be 2019, as adopted by the Humboldt County Code. And that addresses all construction of the outside of the buildings as far as it relates to firelife safety, and the inside of the buildings as it relates to firelife safety, and the administrating and maintenance of such systems as it relates to firelife safety. The potential requirements for fire hydrants, residential fire sprinklers, means of protected egress to public way, rated construction between occupancies, and potential no parking zones due to fire hydrants and/or fire department access to fire sprinklers and pipes can only be properly addressed by the Fire Protection District. And there is a potential impact to the project based on firelife safety issues, and the basis should be addressed regarding parking and building density as it pertains to fire life safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hansel Woski, a developer, but I don't have a dog in this particular fight. It's a rude awakening for people in these areas who, I guess, I'd say you're lucky. They're only two-story. The plan in Arcata is residential areas probably will, a significant portion of the city will be zoned for five-story. Can you imagine how that would be compared to two-story? Unfortunately, our government, our state government and everybody decided that we need a whole bunch more housing, our population shrinking. Personally, I have no problem with the project as far as it goes. I believe the things that are done, the building permits required, the safety things required by the process, it will be a safe place to live, most likely. I find it kind of a fatal flaw where people don't realize they want us all to be bikeable, they want us all to be walkable. But that's not Humboldt County, because people need their cars if they want to leave Humboldt County, because we don't really have a transit system out of here, limited airplanes. So just about everybody has the cars, and until this is fixed from the other end, I don't think that's something that is actually doable. I really hate to see this happening. And I do understand the people not wishing to have this. But on the other hand, my understanding as far as a developer goes, looking at a project that they basically weren't able to do it, they brought in with a project, they brought it before, maybe there's going to be a few more working back and forth amongst people. Hate to have to say it, but most likely this project will go forward. But I do caution the people who think that we really need to have five-story buildings in these kind of areas in other parts of Humboldt County, they have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next. Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Roy Gomez. I'm running for third district supervisor against Mike here, and I actually wasn't going to comment on this because this isn't in our district, but it seems to be a pretty common theme from cities to different areas of our county. This whole trying to force people to stop using their cars, the whole 15-minute city, I feel like is, there's certain factions that are consulting with our local governments that are trying to force people into this situation, whether it be lack of parking with these developments. In the city of Eureka, there was just a 13-unit proposal with zero parking. And I feel that it's really kind of a disrespect to the two most important demographics, in my opinion, of our community, one being the elders of our community who have had a different vision for what they consider the future and what our cities should look like in our county. And the other demographic is our children and our kids, what they're going to inherit, and, you know, the chaos that might come with, you know, lack of parking, lack of businesses, because they can't, because there's not enough parking for businesses, there's not enough parking for tourists, there's not enough parking for the residents themselves. So I feel this is a scenario where people need to be, people need to be listened to and paid attention to what their vision for the future is, and I think there's too many representatives listening to factions that want to force us to stop driving, and I think most of you know who that is.
Thank you.
I can make a public comment, right?
On this item, you can.
Thank you.
General statements, no.
I just wanted to, oh, my name is Laura Peterson. I live, obviously, close to the future development, and I'm not against housing. I welcome housing. I welcome providing our fair share. I just think that that share should be provided under what's actually required by the law, that applicants actually be required to follow the law in order to provide that housing, rather than give an exception after exception after exception. Because if he was actually required to follow the law, it would naturally bring the density down to something that everyone can live with. And I would like to state, I guess, that I may be one of the fewest people in this room that have actually been homeless, that know what dog kibble tastes like. I've lived in my car, I've lived in a boxcar, I've lived in an RV park, I've been in a fire in an RV park, and now I own a home. And I think it is a misnomer to think that if we just provide housing at all costs, that people should be grateful for that. We need beauty. We need all needed in our lives. And the reason I got involved in this project was because there was a planned development that wasn't going to allow any beauty, and we were going to gut the code by not allowing the beauty that is needed to have self dignity. And I guess I would like to state, too, is that if I had a choice between a car and apartment, I'm taking the car. I can live in my car. I can't live in an apartment. And I didn't even sell my van. I kept my van for 30 years, for 30 years, because I was so afraid that I would not have a place to live sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing, no.
Hi.
How you doing?
Well, thank you. How you doing? I, my name is Dana Deason, and I live at 2085 Stevens Way. I've lived there for 24 years now, and I'll be speaking to other things on Friday, but I just wanted to dispel the myth for anybody that's out there that the people who are here appealing this project are against development of the property. None of us are against, well, I can't speak for everybody, but everyone I've spoken to is not against development of the property. We're for development. We realize and recognize that development is a fact of life in Humboldt County. We have Cal Poly Hsu, which is going to be bringing people in. We need development, and we're not against that. We'd love to see a vibrant, thriving town center in McKinneyville. We'd love to see a community where people can live and work in the same community, not have to rely on cars so much. But that's not the reality that we live in right now. We are a car-based society. California is a car-based state. We were founded on cars. If you look at, let me reframe that, the people who colonized California did so based on, in large respect, car cultures. And to ask us to limit, well, you know, actually, I'm not even going to go there. I'm going to stop that. I just want to say that we just really want to maintain the quality of life that we want everybody to be able to enjoy in McKinneyville. We want to stop being the dumping ground for the county, and we would like you to be cognizant of the fact that this is not an anti-development appeal, this is a responsible development appeal. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
No, 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 don't clap on me. Do this. Yay.
I thought you were telling me no, I couldn't come up here.
Well...
I wasn't going to speak, I wasn't going to speak today.
Let me hear you for a little bit first.
I'm sorry. My name is Pat.
You can lower the mic, you don't have standing your toes. There you go.
I live at 1882 Pickett Road. This house has been in my family for 54 years. That shows you what a wonderful community neighborhood that this is. And we want to keep that. We want, we don't mind the new houses, but let's not have such a dense, dense population that nobody feels comfortable anymore. How would you feel if your 75-year-old mom went up to Cherry Heights on Thursday night and played bingo? She gets home 10:30, quarter 11 at night, and there's three cars parked in front of her house that she doesn't know any of them, because the over-densely populated, under-scheduled parking, these people have to have a place to park. So whoever gets home first, they get to park in the parking spot. So it's, hey, Tag, you're it, you go find someplace else to park. We're going to have strangers. All of the roads around us are going to become a public parking lot. And as it is, if you drive in those roads around where we live, a lot of people have two and three and four stops, or more, yeah. And so there's already, I'm lucky, I only have one vehicle, and I get to park in my garage, but not everybody does. And I really, really pray that you guys will stand back, take a deep breath, and take another look at this. It's not just for us, it's for those people that are going to live in those sardine cans. We got to be reasonable. Can't live in a bubble. Thank you.
Thank you. I love the specifics. 11:30 at night from bingo on Thursday, on Thursday at Cherry Heights. I just, it sounded like she was speaking from experience. I just, welcome.
My name is Anthony Lombardo, I live on Stevens Way. I just want to talk about the code, I guess. And it says, according to the code, the purpose of off-street parking is to enhance public safety, you know, by minimizing traffic congestion, which allows people to get to and from their destination safely. And the goal is to keep the cars off the streets, so the streets are safer. And some of the things I want to say are that, you know, in order for cars to be completely parked off the road, so that both drivers and cars are safe, the code requires 18-foot parking spaces. However, the spaces proposed in this project are 16-foot compact car-sized spaces. So the bumper of normal-sized vehicles will extend into the road and create a traffic hazard. Then again, the handicap spaces required are 14-foot wide by 18-foot deep. The proposed project has no spaces deep enough to accommodate 18-foot-long parking lots. Therefore, the project discriminates against the handicap people and aging people, and creates a public safety problem as handicap people try to exit their vehicles. 16-foot-long parking spaces are also dangerous as there are not enough room for anyone to stand behind the vehicles, open the trunk, and get their supplies or whatnot. So that's about it for today. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? I'm waiting. There's no one on Zoom, right?
No, Chair Bone, nobody on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Well, I'll bring it back. I do want to thank everybody for this ability and the passion, but thank you for everybody being so civil and bringing this forth and just, I appreciate it very much. Thank you. And you all get three minutes on Friday. There you go. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we continue. Do you want to do day certain or just continue the hearing?
I would ask that you continue it to Friday, January 26 at 11 o'clock.
Got that, Nick? Okay. So I so make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I do have one question because it came up repeatedly. On the design review, there is no design review committee in place. The D rating, the D allows any supervisor to create a design review committee in his district? Is that, am I getting that right?
Yes, and we were planning on explaining this in more detail during the presentation, but what the ordinance calls for is for the district supervisor to be able to appoint a designer review committee. If one does not exist, then the planning director is basically appointed that role. That normally happens at the time of the building permit.
Okay, and I'm, just for clarification, and I guess this would go to county council, can we go, we can't go backwards, I don't imagine?
I think the concern would be with going backwards is due process and fair notice to the applicant who was provided the process at the time of application.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bone, and thank you all for being here, no matter what side of the issue you're on. I did not become aware of this project until the night of the planning commission hearing. The way the D ordinance actually states is that the applicant has a responsibility, and it says, the applicant shall submit an application for design review. That never happened. The planning department then approved the application as complete without that process. It is true that it gets complicated to go backwards. But really, what we need to be able to do when we meet again on Friday is to recognize that one of the purposes of a design review at the local level is that that local community is weighing in on the project versus a planning commission where only one, sometimes two, might be from McKinleyville, whereas only one of the members of this five-member board are from McKinleyville. A design committee, which I've now formed, but I'm being told it's too late, and that is because nobody notified me that this was even happening, nor did the applicant submit a design application at an appropriate time, where I could weigh in and develop that committee timely. So now we're in a situation where this board has to act as the design review committee. And I am just really going to implore this board to think about the community, not from the county's perspective, but from the community's perspective. Yes, we represent the county. And yes, we all need housing. And I have not met a single person who's opposed to developing this property and developing housing. It is a question of density, it's a question of solar access, it's a question of parking, it's a question of onsite drainage control, because the people on Stevens are already experiencing flooding. So we're going to get into all those details at much greater length on Friday, and I am just imploring this board to really think about what the purpose of a design committee would be, and how we as a board can consider the community's input and create housing, but do it in a way that does not create all kinds of impacts on that neighboring community. So again, we'll get into this much more on Friday, but given that the issue is brought up about the design committee, I thought I would clarify that for the record. Thank you.
Sorry, I got excited.
I saw that. After I heard that. All right. With that, it's been moved and seconded.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Chair Bone?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
See you on Friday. I'm going to ask everybody to clear out. If you're going to talk, if everybody go outside, please, thank you. Thank you. All right. Bring this back to the CIO and the Measure Z.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Today before you is a discussion on Measure Z per your board's discussion. You asked that we return in January to discuss the remaining funds and the committee's recommendations and the ongoing role of the Citizens Advisory Committee. So before you today is Deputy County Administrative Officer Sean Quincy and Deputy County Administrative Officer Jessica Maciel, who will present to you staff's recommendations.
Thank you, CIO Hayes. And I have a short slide deck to help us guide this conversation.
Wait. I'm drinking. It's healthy, made in the USA. I don't know where the cow came from.
Is that working on your end? All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay. To do some table setting, due to low revenues in fiscal year 2223, revenue is coming well below projections, there was just over $700,000 to recommend in funding for Measure Z in fiscal year 2324. The committee and Measure Z applicants, upon hearing this news, were understandably frustrated and recommended to your board a series of changes to make to Measure Z. And in response, your board took swift action to deallocate a number of county positions and were able to free up funding for several high-priority projects in the current year. And then your board also approved a multi-year spending plan, shown here, to ensure that fire, rural ambulance, and a drug task force agent were available to serve the community through the foreseeable future. So the decision before your board today is what to do with roughly $5.4 million in Measure Z that is currently in our fund balance. These are the savings from fiscal year 2223 that are in the bank right now. Typically, this funding is available for allocation with the mid-year budget report. However, chief among the committee's concerns is that if that funding is allocated at mid-year, the committee would have relatively little to recommend in fiscal year 2425. We currently estimate that figure to be around $700,000. In the future years, that number could be even less for several reasons. The spending plan that your board approved would keep allocations flat for larger departments, while their costs would continue to grow, meaning that they will be more motivated to use more of their allocations to preserve services. Salary projections also done at mid-year are typically conservative. More to the committee's point, however, is the relatively vulnerable position that is inherent with our current practice. When Measure Z was first adopted, there was an urgency to get funding out quickly to provide both, to both provide public safety services and also to build trust with the community that this local funding was going to be spent for its intended purposes. That was part of the reason for the constant, seemingly constant revising of projections and returning to the board at almost every opportunity staff saw for extra funding. However, that practice placed a high reliance on projections, and as we have seen, this funding source can change quickly. It also prevented us from building any fund, any fund balance to use in the event that revenues do not come in as projected. On the qualitative front, the Measure Z, or the mid-year allocation process uses a prioritized list that was developed by the Measure Z committee almost a year earlier. The board typically funds projects that are further down the list. However, the committee has stated that, given a choice, it prefers to have the top-ranked items funded in future years as opposed to items lower on the list in the current year. Which brings us back to our decision point, which is essentially a change in the way that funding is determined and projects are awarded. This slide details in a kind of rudimentary way how we determine funding that's available each year. As I just reviewed, our current practice is to take our actual savings from the prior year and any revenue, and any revenue above that year's projections, and allocate those funds at the mid-year budget process. Then, as we prepare for the Measure Z committee's process for next year, we project our savings in the current year and revenues in the coming year, and use that funding, determine a funding level for the upcoming year. Those two amounts combined result in the funding that we take to the Measure Z committee. And this is our situation now. That prior year figure, the funding that is in the bank and available for allocation at mid-year is $5.4 million. If allocated now, the Measure Z committee would have as little as $700,000 or so to recommend next year. Which brings us to our recommended change in process. The Measure Z committee met in December after your board approved the three-year spending plan earlier. The committee unanimously approved that spending plan as it moves the county closer to the committee's goal of ensuring there is substantial funding each year for entities outside the county. The committee also considered the process I just described and recommended that we change the way we determine the funding that is available to be allocated. Essentially, now that Measure Z is an established funding source and proven method to provide services, the committee is opting for a more risk-averse approach, where we rely less on projections and more on funding that has been realized. Advantages are that the majority of funding is available already in fund balance and in the bank, less reliance on projections. It also removes an administrative step in contract creation and budget adjustments and tracking. These allocations often span two years when they are done at mid-year, because there's not enough time between February and June to spend the allocations often, and the funding is carried over, new contract is required, and additional board action, supplemental budgets are required also. This is what the process would look like if your board adopts the committee's recommendations. There would be between $5.4 million to $5.9 million to allocate next year. This could change depending on whether your board chooses to place a portion of this funding into a reserve account, as recommended by the committee. So this is essentially taking funding from fiscal year 22, skipping over the current year, mid-year allocation process, and reserving that funding for fiscal year 2425. And then doing the same with the current year, 2324, reserving any unspent funding from this year, waiting to allocate that in 2526. I will say also, the committee is also recommending that allocations only be made with the adopted budget. And so I just want to leave this slide up for your board to make sure that we stay on track with our decisions. These are the decision points before your boards today. The committee is recommending that your board save all of the unspent funding from fiscal year, from the prior year, hold it through the current year, then allocate it in the following year, and make that an annual process. And also... It also recommends, as I just stated, awarding funding only once per year. And finally, the committee recommends holding 16% of the unspent funding per GFOA recommendations from fiscal year 22, 23, and hold that in a reserve account to be used to fund, to fund projects that are in the spending plan in the event that revenues come in too low. And this final recommendation may need written policy. With that, I'll be available for questions.
I'll bring it back to the board? Or would you rather hear a community comment first? Let's hear. No, I'd ask, do you want, if you want to speak, please. Good.
Thank you through the chair. So I understand the committee's recommendation that they want to be able to allocate the $5.4 million worth of process of applications. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, part of what the committee has done in the past is the allocations that are up there now that are set amounts, those were, were applications, correct?
Those were applications in fiscal, in the current fiscal year.
And almost every year.
Correct.
So that takes out a lot of the application process. And the, and it does also, as we're looking at the paperwork that you had up there, or the slides, it decreases over the next three years. Like fire decreases below the ask every year. Down to 940,000, or 940,000, I think. And so I, I understand the committee's concern, but I do want to recognize that most of the applications that they have to choose from have been addressed with the amounts we've set to try to get in, back into a reasonable amount with Measure Z as far as county employees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I, I just want to say that when we made the, I have two questions. I have a statement and a question. So the first statement is that when we made the decisions with the committee's recommendations several months ago, six months ago, we under, underfunded all of their choices, excluding some of their choices as well, knowing that we were going to come back at mid-year and hopefully have some monies. And, and so that's a statement. The question is, how did we get to $5.4 million in excess on a decreased amount of sales tax year for a couple of years? And why didn't we know that at the time so that we could allocate monies out more? For instance, fire got 500 and something thousand, nothing, not an amount of money that they could really do anything with except for pay dispatch. So that question first, please.
So I can speak to that. The $3 million that came from savings is due to vacancies and salary savings in county departments primarily, and a couple hundred thousand from outside agencies underspending their allocations. And then the $2.4 million, we would have not had any idea was coming at that time because it's due to a new accrual process in the auditor controller's office, accruing back two months, July and August of sales tax, which is because those, when we received July and August sales tax, they're actually for two months in arrears, so they apply to the prior year. So it was just an accounting change.
Okay, thank you for that. And I understood that, I want the community to understand that as well. And then before we hear public comment, you know, we as a board really talked about and considered a lot of things during the Measure D, Measures Z discussion, including that knowing we would come back at mid-year and have monies available. I do want to thank the committee a lot for all their continued work. It's a really tough job and it's hard to come before this board and have recommendations come. And then sometimes we, we follow them, sometimes we don't. I also want to recognize that with the Measures Z ad hoc, which I'm part of and Supervisor Wilson is part of, along with county staff, wanted to really consider what the Measures Z committee wanted that money, those monies to look like in the future and trying to get there. The last thing that I'll say is, we also, you know, stated that when we came back at mid-year that if we could fund things, some other things, that we would consider that. So I understand the savings portion, but I'm not sure that's what the, what the community wants when you consider public safety and that amount of money, $5.4 million. And also that we have funded in the future the things that the committee asked, you know, prioritize every single year to make sure that they would get funding. So I just want to, during the conversation, just have that as a thought for my board.
If I could just add one addition to Jessica's comments on the excess funding that we have, that $3 million that we've experienced in salary savings is rather extenuating because we had that year where we allocated all of those county staff and then we've been spending about a year, year and a half evaluating those, cutting those back because we saw the, you know, the trouble on the horizon that we, we've cut back eight, 12th of those positions, I believe, of 16 that were allocated to address the committee's concerns and the community's concerns that the county staff were taking over the lion's share of Measures Z revenues. So while we were working through that process, we weren't filling those positions. And so there were a significant number of positions that the board allocated that were not being filled for the entire year while we evaluated our, our situation. And so that is why there is $3 million in savings. And that's not typical of what we would experience in a normal year.
Thank you to that. I believe that those salary savings weren't, it wasn't because we, we said, "Don't fill those positions." I believe it was the positions that couldn't get filled. And while I recognize that that money came back, and now we're working towards that goal of not having so many county employees filled with Measure Z. In my discussions, I, I remember that it's because they weren't able to be filled, is that?
So over a million dollars of those savings is from DHHS and it's from your board's direction to utilize grant funds before using the Measures Z.
With the missed program, correct?
Yes, and so it's, a lot of it is due to that.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
Well, I guess I'll throw this out there before anybody wants to comment. I appreciate everything we did at the last meeting and the committee and everything else. And I, I agree for a little bit of savings, I do agree with that. But earlier in December, I'd asked Director Mattson, this was before we had the mess that we're facing now. If he could give me, if I asked for a million dollars for roads out of this, if he would give me deliverables, not just give him a million dollars to go out and patch and fill and everything else, give me deliverables of things that need to be fixed before they become catastrophic and things that he could go out and do and deliver for, for a million dollars and then use that money obviously for fixing these other things. And he came up with a list of grind and pave second sections on Salmon Creek and Thomas Roads, grind and pave sections of Il River Drive, grind and repave sections of Murray Road, grind and repave sections of Philbrook Road, grind and repave sections of New Navy Base Road, grind and repave the bad sections in town of Garberville to get us by until the larger project is started, which is going to be a while, dig out grind and repave sections on Ridgewood Road, grind and repave Humble Hill sections, and add a second flat car bridge to the Dry Creek Crossing on Matole Road on the beach to make two lanes, because that's a blind bridge now. So, and that comes to about a million dollars. And I would, I'm still going to probably ask for that. I don't know where that's going to go. But roads are going to be, I mean, roads, fire, share, we need them all. I mean, you know, and, and in no way does any of this reflect a spiking of the sales tax. There's two, there's two positive things to look at. The sales tax didn't decline, but we'd still be on welfare if we're looking about how much it went up. It's not a good position. But the bright spot is, it didn't decline. And we have to keep. And then I also know, I bless Philip Smith Haynes and Amy and everything else, and I know where our CIO gets it from. We get conservative numbers every time we get money. We don't get any smoke blown. We just get what's, what's, you know, we, we get worst case scenario almost, and then what we see, we see what we have now. And it's a lot easier, it's not easier to read, but down the line, it's easier for, for our staff. And then they've done a great job on this to work with. And hopefully it's better for the community. As Supervisor Bushnell said, it's what the community wants to see. Has Measure Z evolved into everything we wanted to? No, but it has evolved into, I mean, 15 to 18 million dollars to our volunteer fire department, more to our share if I understand that. Roads, I mean, the, the ambulance service, we have done some amazing stuff with this. But as is everything, we're going to have to get tougher and everybody knows it because I don't think we know what we're going to face with the governor's budget. I mean, I heard it was 69 billion, now we're to 37 billion. Now he's going to make it work and I think we're going to see some issues. So moving forward, I appreciate what the CIO has, has done and, and, and under the tutelage of her former CAOs. So with that, we'll take it to public comment.
Thank you Chair Bone, there's no Zoom, nobody in Zoom.
There is no Zoom. Welcome.
Well, this is, again, if you're going to put ballot measures on in November, you're going to have to really consider what's transpired here. Historically, I've been in the chamber ever since it was first brought forward on Measure Z. I came out against Measure O, and my prophecy was quite correct on that one as soon as that passed. And we didn't have five years to go back to the voters. A lot of people feel like they were thrown under the bus by the county on the tax thing. A lot of this money prior to it was shared by all the different municipalities. That's no longer true. The people that were promised such things as your fire department people and things like that, they're here to speak. I know, looked like some of these things on here. I think City of Fortuna always shows up and speaks, and I'm glad these people speak. But I think there's a lot of people disillusioned with the manner in which your tax money has been spent and is, or being spent. I recall right, I saw one of the Channel 10 things, Su Long came and sat down at the table there for, on the committee and she said, "Well, why am I here? There's nothing ready to decide." It's sad to see this happen. We were told the first year that we financed the ambulances, two of which were up there, a significant portion of what was on the board there, that there was going to be districts for them. Well, that never happened. And those people should be phased out. I mean, that's reality there. I know it's nice to be able to do those things, but, but they're going to have to find other sources of income and you're going to have to start playing hardball with all the other people out there. Anyway, I strongly support, you're reworking Measure Z in its totality. It needs to go back to ratios that it started with so that everybody out there who's supported you on this thing is being made whole. They're not, and they're, they're not happy. There are a lot of, lot of disenfranchised people out there. And I think a big mistake is being made. Again, we're going to go back to Measure, Measure S. We want to know where that money went. And COVID money probably won't come again, thank you.
Thank you. Ginger? You guys want to orchestrate this? Glenn, who's coming up next? Looks like you're running the band. Okay, all right, Ginger's running the band.
Good morning supervisors. My name is Sean Robertson. I'm the Fire Chief for Humboldt Bay Fire, as well as the Humboldt County Fire Chiefs Association representative on the Measures Z committee. I've been in that role for five years since I've been a chief, going into six. I just wanted to thank the committee and the supervisors and the community of Humboldt County for all their support. As Supervisor Bone said, volunteer fire agencies have received 12 to 15 million dollars of the, the course of Measure Z and it's, it's been a huge improvement for all of our services to the communities. Our response needs have changed as our communities have changed so that burden and that responsibility of maintaining our services is, is going to be ongoing. So through the committee recommendations, what we have looked for is a more sustainable method of not just determining what is the best recommendations to you from the Measures Z applicants, but also how we can continue to make Measures Z work. And that's ultimately the recommendations we came up with. Part of deferring the, the fund balance for one year was just to create an ability for us to have a much more accurate ability to make those recommendations because that is our function. And it is a difficult job, as you said. And frankly, the roller coaster of Measure Z and being a committee member is, is pretty significant. So I'd like to just, again, thank you for your consideration of the committee's recommendations and know that it will serve the fire agencies as well as the rest of the applicants well in the future. Thank you.
Next Chief. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Ginger Campbell. I'm the Chair of the Measures Z Committee. This is my 10th year. Mr. Zeimer and I started at the same time when it all came down. And I just am going to give you a little quick history of what happened to us. There were nine of us in a room. Mr. Smith Haynes came in. He had stacks of paper for each of us. And he said, "We've never done this before. We have no idea what we're doing. We're going to depend on you to decide what you're going to do and good luck." I mean, basically, I'm paraphrasing. But it, but it was just like that and we all kind of went, okay. We didn't know what it was about either, really. And so through the years, you know, things have changed somewhat. The first application process was Mr. Zeimer and myself and another committee member spent an entire Saturday at his wife's office developing an application. I mean, that's where it went. And it's changed a lot since then. But I just want to say that the mid-year funding has always been problematic for us as a committee because even though, like you said, Michelle, that, you know, you don't always fund what we recommend, it's also, has been disturbing in the past, as you know. One agency came and asked for a car that wasn't even on their application and it was given to them. Another agency had been two weeks late in getting their application in, so we said we couldn't accept it. And the board accepted it and funded that agency. I'm going beyond 30 seconds. So I, you know, we don't agree necessarily with the mid-year funding because what happens is you kind of tell people in your districts or whatever, "Hey, just come back at midterm because there's always some extra money and we'll help you out." It may not sound exactly like that, but that, those are promises that we don't know are happening. And then when we come back at the beginning of the year, you know, we have a lot less money. So we, we're looking forward to this bigger chunk of money that we can start on a yearly process.
Thanks.
Okay.
Welcome.
Chairman Bone, members of the board. I'd like to just urge you very directly to adopt the recommendations of staff and the committee for a couple of reasons. The variability that comes to the process with this mid-year funding has been problematic for the committee, it's been problematic for the applicants, and it's been problematic for you. As mentioned, the staff has done a good job of being conservative in their revenue estimates to you, out of a sense of caution which was appropriate. But it's also resulted in a pretty significant variance year to year because the 5.4 that, that you're speaking to earlier is a real outlier as far as the accumulated revenue. It only exists because of the situations we don't even want to think about with the auditor controller a couple of years ago. The recommendations the committee has given you are solid recommendations. I understand the political pressures of having $5.4 million sitting in a bag on your desk and telling the public that you're going to reserve 16% of that for unforeseen circumstances when the needs you have are acute and appropriate to your job. But the simple fact of the matter is, we need to start to begin to become fiscally responsive in the way we handle our money. And being fiscally responsive in this circumstance means there need to be an established reserve that can try to smooth out the variance to some degree and keep some consistency for our committee and for the applicants as well. So I'm going to strongly request that if in fact you value the committee's work as highly as you all claim to, that you take this opportunity to adopt the recommendations the committee has made to you. They are not made hastily, they are not made in a lack of judgment, and they're not made from any particular political or, or social point of view. They're simply us trying to be effective in the way we're utilizing the money that is available. So I would again strongly urge you to adopt the recommendations as shown in the staff report, establish the reserve, and put us on a mid-year funding process that lets us deal with money we actually have instead of a variety of projections that are exactly that, projections. that, projections.
Tom Atson, Director of Public Works. I do have a lot of respect for the Measure Z Committee, but I have to say at this time, I would ask you to invest in your roads before the costs go up. Each of those projects I gave to some of you board members, those will go up four or five times when we have to go to reconstruction, rather than grind and repave. The sooner you invest in your roads, the more that money goes. We are also, as I said earlier today, we had a five-million-dollar hit with this current storm damage in Whirlie in January. We also have a huge amount of equipment that we have to replace due to carb requirements. So I would ask that, yes, I agree, you should have a reserve, I agree, you should have money in the bank, but I also think you should invest when you have money to invest, and I believe you can invest in your roads right now. This is money that will go down on the ground before the year end. Grind and repave is a very simple contract that we can put out, it doesn't require a lot of detail. I ask you, and I urge you, to invest in your road system with the money you have available today. Thank you.
Hello, I'm actually here as a committee member, Measure Z Committee member. All of us on this committee are all volunteers. We put in a lot of time and a lot of effort in this. We don't get paid for any of this, and it's something that we are doing for our county. So I really hope that you will respect that and listen to, this is a unanimous decision by all of the committee, and all of us do have, you know, other areas where we would like to have funding, but we want to get this set up so it can be done every year, not that we'll have a lot this year and none this year. If we can take that mid-year funding from every year and start that with the following year, that's going to be a lot easier for the committee and a lot easier for the board to make recommendations on. And that's something that we all felt very strongly about, and we hope that you will really consider the hard work that we do and our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'll close public comment. Nobody showed up, right, Nick? Could, C A O, could you have somebody call in to see if they can get in? We have not had one call in, I do believe, right? Madam C A O?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Can you have somebody in the office call in to see if there is actually, that is actually working today?
Next.
Nick, you got it? Thanks, Nick. Well, I'm, I'm sure, I guess I can go first if I want. I'm still going to respect the committee to about eighty-three percent, and still push for the million dollars. I respect you eighty-three percent, that's pretty good. No, I need to push for the million dollars for these deliverables here, and not to vary off of this, because it's, our roads, unless we're going to try to dig more and try to get money later on, I think we've heard that very clearly, and what we suffered this weekend, or the last two weeks, I think these are things that need to be looked at. So, let me stick with my thought on that, I don't know if anybody else likes the idea. Supervisor Medron, then Bushnell?
Well, I very much appreciate the work of the committee, and these are some really great recommendations going forward. I also am torn about the roads issues as well, and my sense is that come March, the committee will probably, from what I've seen in the recommendations and the rest of it, be looking to allocate significant money to fire services and roads. So there is some logic behind wanting to allocate some of that money to the roads right now. So I'm struggling with that, because I really do want to make sure that we're providing opportunity for the committee to weigh in on all these things, but if something seems very likely, why not go ahead and take care of it right now? I was going to make a motion to adopt all of these staff recommendations, but given what's happened the last couple of weeks, and given the deferred maintenance on our roads, I would very much like to see some funding go to roads sooner than later. In regards to the list, I mean, that was developed by Tom, and I appreciate that you tried to come up with projects within pretty much most of the districts, other than perhaps, well, Eureka even had, I think, your district even had one project, I believe, Navy Base Road. I believe that's in your district, Supervisor Royal?
It's in my district. Of the projects that Supervisor Medron just listed, but it's not in Eureka.
Right, in your district, yeah. At any rate, I'm just going to leave it at that. I'm struggling with the need for roads right now, but I very much want to move this process to not doing all this mid-year type of funding, and respecting the committee's work, et cetera. So I'm going to see what the rest of the board thinks.
Yeah, I said you were next.
Okay, thank you. I do very much respect the committee and their thoughts, and wanting to have a savings for next year. I also recognize there's two things, that roads and fire were severely cut at when we did allocate, because there wasn't money. We at that time also referenced to a three-hundred-thousand dollars that we held back, I think at the time we were discussing, just in case. And so, you know, there was intent to come back and see what this looked like at mid-year, which is right now. I have talked to a lot of my district and community members, and they're not sure that saving money every time is what the intent was, although the intent is to fund things and have the committee work and be able to do that, which, you know, if there's no money there for the committee to allocate, then that's exactly what the committee was saying, what are we here for? So I do want to really respect that, but I also feel obligated to maybe get some of those funds out, and I'm going to make a motion that we fund a million dollars to fire, and a million dollars to the roads. Now, I don't know if someone will second that, I hope that they will, but, and what that million dollars to the roads looks like, I do like the list that was created, and, you know, that really is specific on fixing items and not using that money in the roads for any staff. And so I like that, and I like that Tom's group, that Tom brought that forward, and said, "This is what we can do with a million dollars." So that's my motion, I hope I can get some support. Fire was cut the most during the allocation. They got enough money to pay for their dispatch, and every district has volunteer fire departments, except for maybe Eureka, I'm not sure, but that money is very important to Humboldt, and they weren't able to do a lot besides pay for their dispatch. So that does give the committee three-point-four million dollars of a savings to work with starting in March.
Just as a clarification on the three-point-four million, if you accept all of staff recommendations, that includes the reserve, and so that money will be held back from what's available to the committee.
So I recognize that my motion probably needs some work, but I do want to say that I want to make a motion of a million dollars to fire and a million dollars to roads, and I see C A O Hayes.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say, because if I don't, then I'll probably kick myself later for not, that the roads discussion does go completely outside of the application process and the committee process. So I just want to be clear that we understand that, because that has been a bit of a point of contention with the committee, and there is an application that's next in line in the committee's recommendations for five-hundred-thousand dollars for a road. So just for situational awareness, I just want to put that on the table for the discussion.
So I, my motion, if I could, through the chair, I looked at the recommendations and list in line, and five-hundred-thousand dollars is for roads, and so I don't feel that, and I realize that my motion needs some work, but it's not so much out of what the committee looks at, given that they ranked it pretty high.
I wanted to clarify that my district does have the Sommo Peninsula Fire, and in Eureka, there are volunteers with Humboldt Bay Fire, but it's not a, you know, a volunteer, exclusively volunteer fire department. So, and Peninsula Fire is, like all small volunteer districts, hurting for revenue and in need of equipment replacement, et cetera. That said, so the, I just want to clarify that, you know, the April would be when the committee is putting together a list of prioritized projects again, so that would begin, you're saying that would begin in earnest in March, I know it's a year-round committee, but, so that would be a couple of months from now, right?
Correct.
That they're putting together their recommendations.
Yes.
I hear that there are very serious needs in both of those areas, and I'm inclined to go with the committee's recommendation.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I'm also inclined to go with the committee's recommendation, mostly because of the timing of this, it seems like we're going to be getting this coming back in April, it's just a few months away. I might be inclined to, if five-hundred-thousand dollars was what was sort of next in line for roads, and there's, I think there's an anticipation that that's something that's not unlikely to be in that, in that process, then I would say, I would be willing to entertain the modification to these, to this, for a five-hundred-thousand-dollar allocation to roads, to get that ball rolling, so that some projects can start. I'm not sure they can get to all those projects between now and April, and so I think that this would give some surety to them to be able to start moving. And so, I think for me, that's where I'm kind of, I'm landing, I'm landing the recommendation of the committee minus the five-hundred-thousand, which was kind of next in line. So that's just, that's where I'm at.
Supervisor Bushnell?
So when that work starts for the committee, when does it get funded?
That will be, that will come with the adopted budget, so money will start flowing July one.
Yep, so it's a long time to wait, and if we're going to consider, I would ask my board if we're going to consider next in line, we cut everyone's funding when we allocated, because there was, you know, six hundred, we didn't have that much money. So, you know, I really urge the board to really think about that, that the requests that were made and the suggestions of the committee to fund what we did, all of that was cut, and so we didn't fund a lot of items, and we underfunded everything that was asked, because we didn't have the money at the time. And I do understand the need for savings, it still leaves money in there for the committee to work with.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, with all that, I just want to make sure that we had a reminder of how transparent this process is. Measure Z and the subsequent Measure O is a, you know, is a sales tax that set up a process that is actually pretty unique in the state, has a lot of transparency and process that's different than a lot of other places. Not everyone is happy all the time with Measure Z. Matter of fact, that's, it is, this is the way it is. I mean, we're all going to have disagreements on the priorities of where this gets spent, for sure, but unlike so many tax measures that we've seen in so many places, this one is, this one has a lot of process to it. And I think what the anxiety that happened is when this board allocated such a percentage to ongoing staff costs, and, you know, as we know, it's like, even just in one department, Sheriff's Department has thirty more positions filled today than before, right? So there's a lot, there is, there is, there's been changes that have occurred. Money is being spent within the community, both on materials and personnel, and it's all tracked, and it's all audited, and we have processes for this, as clunky as they are, because we're, because it's full of human beings. But I want to say, like, I'm very, actually very grateful that we have this model to start with, and it was, I liked Ginger's story to begin with, which was like, "Hey, we've never done this before, let's see what happens." Like, just, you know, sometimes you do have to go for it, and you beta-test things as they move along, and you make changes, and you modify, you're seeing that happen right here in real time. So I just wanted to just put out a word of thanks to the community for investing in ourselves in these sectors, and it's never going to be enough. We're always going to be debating the strategy on how best to spend this money, because there's not enough, and that's sort of where we're at. So with that, I, I'd like to take it, you know, I think, I do think the recommendation to sort of reel this back and give it back, give, you know, a larger portion back to that process is valid, I think it's, it's good policy, although I do feel like we do have enough of road issues that, you know, getting that half a million moving forward today is of value, and I'm, and I think that's a reasonable compromise.
We always compromise when it comes to roads, or we put them on the last, and I don't, you know, and this is not to disregard anybody else on the list, but I can remember, because we didn't get enough return, losing a stoplight at Oak and F Street that was approved by the Measure Z Committee, and there's been seven accidents there since then. Trust me, I get a phone call every time there's one. There was actually a hood of a car nailed to the telephone pole here a couple of weeks ago, I have a picture of it, and underneath it, there was a big sign that said, "Bone's Hood." So, but we decided, and you guys have seen Broadway lately, who wants to drive on Broadway? So everybody's taking F Street, but we decided we didn't need a stoplight there with a school block away. So that one will always trouble me, but we'll move that down the road. Right now, we heard from our Public Works Director four or five times a mount that we can, we can invest a million dollars, or invest three-and-a-half million dollars later. And if we're going to have that money later, that's fine, and to get the ball rolling, geez, I don't know, I just, we've got to get these things fixed, and the idea of just saying, "Well, let's do it later when he has more time," or "They won't need to get it." It takes a while to design, he's going to have to have the guys draw it up, it's a simple, it's a simple process, but you still have to go out and engineer it, and follow the guidelines, and then put it out to bid, for the ones we don't do ourselves. So with the work we have doing, we can sit here and fiddle, or we can get some things done. Fire, I agree, I'd like to see that increased, but we, and I think that will come in April, I wouldn't mind seeing that in April, but the roads things I want to move forward, fire has money available now, because I understand law stuff is backlogged, that you've ordered, am I, is that right?
They have one-point-nine million in carry forward of things that were moved to twenty-three, twenty-four.
And that's, that's not because they're having trouble spinning it, that's because they're having trouble filling the orders of what they, they need to do, and that is critical. I think that's one of the things that's critical on there. But I'm going to hold for the million on the roads, and get it handed to me again, but I, I think this was a good cross-section, I asked Tom, I had no input, I says, "Just give me," my exact quote was, "Give me a million dollars of deliverables, spread it out on what you think is critical." And that's what he, and that's what he delivered, and I'm going to, I'm going to stand to that. And after this weekend, I imagine this is, it's, this list could grow and grow and grow, but, but the thing is, it's going to take a while to get this on the road, you say, "Well, we got three more months till April, and we can do it in April." I think Tom is well-stated, and I can tell you how many of these meetings I've gone to in the last, you know, when they said, "How are we going to do this?" I remember, I gave twenty-five-hundred dollars of my own money to pass the original, the original Measure Z, so I just, because it was important that we have this funding, and it has been critical, and I, Shaun, I appreciate you, our volunteer fire departments with weather packs, with their, with the firefighter's gear and their other equipment have been brought up to standards that they should be at, but we have to keep them at those. We're not all the way there, Russ, but we're getting there, I understand, but we have to keep getting them to those standards. So I agree that if we could do the money in April to fire, I, but I'm going to stand by the roads right now, because of, roads doesn't have a back- doesn't have a backlog.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So my, my motion didn't get a second. I'll try again. And I'm, I'm going to say that Fire was number one on the committee's list, and they got funded $566,000. That's it. And that was number one on your list. So while I, I really, really respect the committee and appreciate all your work, and Ginger, that was a great story because I hadn't heard that. I, I do think that they, this money is not going to get funded until July. It's a long time. And they're not having trouble spending that one point, whatever money it was. They were having problems getting the items, which they have gotten and which Supervisor Bone said. So I'll make another motion. I, I'll make a motion, and I'm going to have to work on this with the, let me see what the, it'll be a million dollars for Roads. And, hold, hold on, I'm getting here. Thank you. So it would, I would say that we give the Roads a million dollars right now. I'm going to the recommendation, sorry. Considering the committee's recommendations for the reserve, but to carve it out a million dollars for Roads, and adopt the Citizens of Izzy Committee's recommendation, so that'll be two. And, and that would also number three, because that would create a reserve account. And then number four, adopt the committee's recommendation to seek its input regarding any potential spending plans that could be adopted after 2026 and '27. And then the, provide the further direction would be the million dollars for Roads.
I'll second. Supervisor Rowe?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think those are both incredibly worthy and critically important functions. And I think what we're also faced with here is, so this is my first, this is my first time thinking through certainly, you know, Measure Z considerations and, you know, essentially, you know, Measure Z overpromised. There's, there's more promise than we could ever deliver, ever, with any amount of money. The description, the ballot language, all of that, you know, it, it sounds wonderful. And of course, people are going to vote for it because it sounds amazing. But there's more promise than we could, than any, you know, any tax measure could ever deliver. That said, you know, I think what we're faced with here, and this is my first time really feeling the pressure of that mid-year allocation because last year was anomalous. So I know you've all been here before, and this is my first time sitting and going, wow, you know, we have these very worthy projects that were scored very highly, who are, and folks are accustomed to there being an allocation made at this point in the cycle. And so to, to go against that is, is quite difficult. That said, what we're asked to do here is really decide on a process. And if we, if we want to have meaningful engagement in the Measure Z process in the future, and really meaningful engagement in all of our committees and commissions and boards to which we appoint community members to do hard work, I do think we need to strongly consider and adopt their recommendations whenever possible. So this is a difficult point to be at. I support the intent in the projects that are in the, you know, proposed motion, but I, hearing loud and clear from our, from our committee members and from our staff and on our agenda here, you know, what's being asked for is that we, we not do this, that we stop doing this moving forward. So I, I'm hearing that loud and clear, and I'm, I mean, I'm still inclined to go with that. I would, you know, perhaps go down the rabbit hole of compromises. But I, I think the cleanest thing to do would be to push this to the next cycle and, you know, have the committee hear very clearly how important those priorities are to us.
Supervisor Medrow?
Thank you, Chair Bone. And just to clarify, the motion that has also gotten a second is to adopt the staff recommendations, number two, three, and four, with an allocation of a million dollars to Roads at this time. And that is not out of disrespect for the committee's work. In fact, Roads have been submitted over and over again in the process and rarely been given any money of any significance. So I do not see this as an anomaly. They've been asking for money. We just had major storms. The need is even greater. So I'm very much inclined to support the motion as it's been laid out. Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Well, this is a tough one. I want to say, the list of projects that were pointed out, and maybe, Tom, you can help me with this, but it is a bit disproportional in relation to our districts. And I just want to like, so there's, there is that. And there's always been an issue around the, around sort of the disperse, dispersal of these funds within our communities. And I think, so we have, just around the Humboldt Bay region, what do we have with Ridgewood and New Navy Base Road? Where, what else do we have?
Humboldt Hill Road as well. These are our main roads. When, I try not to look at districts when I look at the road system. I try to look at the road system as one system countywide. But frankly, I could spend all the money in any one of the districts.
You could, absolutely. It's true. Okay. But still, I mean, that, I mean, we hear this. I'm just, it's not, it's not, it doesn't go without, without notice from, from folks who are, you know, paying into these taxes. I think, I, I mean, I am inclined to vote for this because I, like I said, I was inclined to, to vote for the $500,000. However, I, it, it's going to be rough when we get to the committee process. And, I mean, this is going to, I'm just going to leave a bit of a bad taste in people's mouths with, in, in terms of the committee process. And so I'm kind of torn between the needs of those, of those projects in this moment and the process. I am kind of at the flip the coin sort of moment, for sure, for me. But Tom, do you have anything else you want to add?
Just want to note that Public Works has worked really closely with the committee over the years. Every year, when they've asked us to reduce our ask, we have reduced our ask so that other projects and other important things in the community could be funded. It's, Public Works has never come out and said, we need all of this money. We've come out and said, we have these priorities that we need to get done. We've really focused on not adding staff, but working just on specifically projects. At this time, I'm kind of asking for, and ask back for everything that I've brought back to the table in the past. We have major, major needs. And, you know, I'm just asking that we be considered. You know what our needs are. These are the roads. I get complaints on all of the roads, but these are higher traffic roads generally, or roads that we just get a lot of complaints on that we can fix now cheaper than waiting. And if we get the money now, this is the time we're putting out bids for the summer. You know, if we get the money in July, that's really pushing, pushing things off to the next fiscal year. So right now, January, February, March, that's, this is when we're getting our bids out. This is when we're getting our, our best prices. I put out a bid in July, the price is going to go through the roof because everybody's already booked for the summer. So those are just considerations. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I really appreciate it.
Supervisor Rowe?
I hear that. And I also understand that, you know, when folks are budgeting for, for a wide variety of functions that are funded by Measure Z, that knowing earlier would be helpful. So that makes me wonder if there's, I know it's, you know, not part of our agenda today, but if we would, in the future, if we could avoid some of the challenges that we foresee, or that we see every year in the mid-year point by changing the schedule of when those Measure Z, I, I know that, you know, the sales tax projections need to be as accurate as possible. That said, is there anything we can do timing-wise to make this a better process?
Well, I think that's part of the committee's recommendation to just award funds once per year with the adopted budget, and then avoid any allocations during the, the rest of the year. That'll put us on solid, solid ground.
Would changing the calendar so that the mid-year is the, is the year be more accurate for sales tax projections and effective for some of the, like, construction-related cycles? You know what I'm saying here?
If, yeah, if, if we change the calendar, and we still choose to allocate funding that is only in the bank, whatever point we determine that time at, that's, that's what would allow us to have more solid numbers. We could, we could change the time that we allocate the funding at, at, at any point. But right now, this is, this is a system that we have, if that's, makes sense.
I guess it's really the construction season. So any construction-related proposals, you know, knowing in the spring or early part of the year for the upcoming construction season is, is key. So that, that's just a consideration.
I was just going to know, if we chose to do those allocations, like, at mid-year, it could, and they were annual allocations, it would result in additional administrative burden for our office to bring supplemental budgets to your board, and tracking would be more complicated to take it off of the county budget cycle.
Supervisor Wilson?
Well, in sort of riding this ship, which is the process of Measure Z, we have been, in the past, been doing these mid-year allocations, which are, which has turned out to not be a great practice. And so I see, even if, if there's an approval of today's motion, I see a trajectory. And that trajectory is, it's going to be very hard, if not impossible, I think, for, in these, politically, from, for us to be really taking seriously these mid-year allocations in the future. So I feel like one, we're getting, something's squeezing out today, but it's that, those opportunities are, can just, are becoming much, much less. And, and like, and like the, the subcommittee that both Supervisor Bushnell and I are on, we're, the goal is to really advance the, the flexibility, well, really the usefulness of the, and the, and, of the, of the committee itself and its, and its value, and its promise, and our promise to do that. So that being said, this is, I'm really hoping this is the, the last time that we, we engage in this, should it pass. Thanks.
Supervisor Rowe?
So to clarify the motion, I heard a million for Fire, a million for Roads. And was that not correct? No, just a million for Roads. Okay. Okay.
There wasn't a second there. So it was just a million for Roads.
So a million for Roads is the proposal. Does that motion also include the remainder of the staff recommendation items that we adopt, saying this is the last time ever? Okay. That we're doing it this way. All right. Thanks for clarifying.
It's the last time. Till next time. Well, if you want a clarification. And like I said, I respect the, I appreciate the, the, the motion. It respects the committee about 83%. I'm sorry. But the one, the one district that has taken a beating the most is the Roads. And I hear that on a constant basis. We did a breakdown. It's not exactly equal, but neither are the Roads. The amount of Roads or the, or the configuration of the Roads or the condition of the Roads is equal. So it's been moved and seconded. Nick, you want to call for a?
Thank you, Chair Bone. I'll start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
No.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell? So I want to really say thank you to the committee and for being here today. You guys have waited, you know, all day, and to staff. And I, I am so glad that this is going to be funded for Roads, but I am going to say no because I wanted Fire considered. So, no.
Thank you. Motion carries 3 to 2.
Supervisor Medrow?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out an error in the staff report where it lists myself and Supervisor Bushnell as the ad hoc for Z. It's actually Supervisor Wilson.
My apologies.
Minor, minor deal. Lot to keep track of.
You can be on it if you...
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, we could. The final, well, the, the final item is a retired annuitant, and I could, I can deliver it in 15 seconds. So the last item before your board today is a retired annuitant for Brooke Efferly, who is in Public Works Department. This is a procedural issue where we just have to come before your board departmentally to gain your approval.
I'll make that motion.
Perfect.
And I'll second, and I'll apologize for all the times I've sent her an email by mistake because I sent it, was sending to Brooke.
To Brooke. I've done that. I have no comment.
Any public comment on that?
No callers in Zoom.
Seeing none. Seeing none on Zoom. Call for the vote.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Yeah, we can't, a closed session this time is set for 1:00, so we can't read it in until 1:00. So we'll need to convene here at 1:00 sharp, and then we can close out the day.
With that, I will turn it over to County Council to announce the closed session.
Thank you, Chair Bone. It is the intention of the Board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider the public employee appointment for the position of the Board of, Board Services Manager and Clerk of the Board. It is also the intention of the Board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Christopher Conway versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2300070, and Billy Rutherford versus County of Humboldt et al., Case Number 1:21-CV-02750-RMI.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
Kansawatsky, my public communism, not three or four, no care. Number two, your appointment of position of Board of Services Manager Clerk for the Board. I have three names I'd like to put forward this time. The first person is Tracy, the second person is Tracy, and the third person is Tracy. And you guys can pick from any of those three choices. I'll leave that one up to you in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, we're going into closed session immediately.
How long did you pick?
Thirty-eight minutes.
I would say 20 to 30 minutes.
I would say 20 to 30 minutes.
And County Council, could you read what came of closed session, please?
Thank you, Chair Bone. With regard to Item G2, the Board voted unanimously to appoint Tracy D'Amico as the Board Services Manager, Clerk of the Board, effective March 3, 2024. There was no reportable action taken with regard to Items G3 and G4.
Thank you. And with that, we are closing in the memory of Wayne Maples, who is a veteran. Been in the plumbing business here for over 60 years. Great guy. I think I've known him for close to 60 years. Great family. Had an operation in Santa Rosa, and was well-known in the community, and was very well-beloved, with a great family. So we will adjourn in his honor today as very deserved. Thank you. And we're adjourned.